Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Frankfurt Board of Commissioners Work Session. Today is October 10th, and we'll start with a call, a roll call. We'll ask the clerk to call for a roll.
Commissioner Rosen.
Present.
Commissioner Unger.
Present.
Commissioner May.
Present.
Commissioner Waldrich.
Present.
Mayor Wilkerson.
Present. We do have a quorum, and tonight we have a special presentation. This is KSU Homecoming Week. We have some special guests here tonight.
Yes, Mayor, I invited the KSU Cheerleading Team to get us started with a cheer and to get us started for the Homecoming Week. So I'll allow their coach to come up and introduce them, and introduce them, tell a little bit about you as a coach, and then we'll do a little cheer for the event.
All right. Speaking to the microphone.
Is that my phone?
Yeah. Yeah. I'll put this.
Hello, everyone, and thank you for inviting us to be able to come out and show you a little spirit for Homecoming Week. My name is Amana Gary. This is my first season as the head cheerleading coach, my first as an official head cheerleading coach. I've been a volunteer for over a year and a half now. Our program contains 21 athletes. We have a game day team and a performance team. This year, our performance team did get a bid to NCAA Nationals in Daytona, Florida, so we're hoping to make it to the finals. So welcome today to some of our athletes who are in class, who brought five girls with us that have been on the team for several years now. So I'm gonna go ahead and introduce our Kentucky State University Cheerleading Program.
We need to do this meeting in the morning.
Thank you so much. Have a great Homecoming.
Thank you.
Okay, what a way to start. Next on the agenda, we have ceremonial and recognition items.
Yes, I have one item. Paul Sawyer Public Library has a program on Saturday from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. called Authors Voices, and it's reading by Bluegrass Writers Coalition. About 15 different authors will read five-minute excerpts from their either novel, memoir, play, or poetry, and that's 1:00 to 3:00 on this Saturday, the 15th. You should sign up so they know how many people are coming on the Paul Sawyer website. It should be a nice event.
Thanks for that. Anyone else?
Yeah. I just want to bring up, it is the start of Kentucky State's Homecoming, so I hope you guys can get out and about and maybe be involved in some of their activities. One activities that will be posted hopefully on our website soon will be the Breast Cancer Awareness Walk, 3K Walk. It's Friday, October the 14th at 7:30. It will start in front of the YMCA on Broadway Street and head on down Broadway over to High, then Clinton, and then we're gonna use the Thoroughbred Trail to get up to campus to finish that. So it's a way that we've brought together the community and KSU during Homecoming is starting part of that in our community and finishing that race on Kentucky State's campus. So there is a fee to be included in that, and we will try to get it out there. I know we'll get it out on our Facebook page and things of that nature, so you guys, as the community, can sign up and support moving in that. That's, that was my one thing.
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to take this opportunity and introduce our fellow from Vietnam, Trang Nguyen, as part of the U.S. Department of State Young Southeast Asian Leadership Initiatives, the Professional Fellows Program, and she's been with us for about three weeks, working on the Trails application, Trail Town, and, but tell us a little bit more about yourself, Trang. We're so happy to have you here.
Greetings, everyone, and thank you so much for having me. As Laura introduced, my name is Chanhui, and I'm from Hanoi, Vietnam. I'm a visiting fellow under the West Valley Professional Fellows Program funded by the Department of State. It's my pleasure to be here with the City of Frankfurt. I've been here for three weeks. I think it might seem like a bit late introduction, but I guess I'm happy to be here during a very busy time of the city, and I feel very lucky because I get the chance to observe and enjoy a lot of different activities, particularly different community engagement activities here that I think is very interesting and very applicable to the context of South Asia that I can bring home. A bit about myself, back home, I'm working as a sustainability consultant with a strong focus on sustainable tourism development. I work for a consulting firm called Clickable Impact. Our headquarters is based in Hanoi, Vietnam, but we actually work at a regional level. So I work beyond Vietnam, I work in other South Asian countries like Cambodia, Laos, Thailand, Indonesia, Singapore, and the Philippines. So those are my focused countries in South Asia. My work really, working closely with local governments, national governments, non-governmental organizations like the United Nations, bilateral organization like the Australian, Australian governments, German governments, and also I work with USAID, which is Development Agency of the U.S. on some of the conservation projects in Vietnam and South Asia. I also work with different multilateral banks like the World Bank or Asian Development Banks on some sustainable tourism investment in Vietnam and in other South Asian countries. Some of my ongoing and past work is, I'm right now, I'm a regional consultant for a new facility, a new fund of about $2 million on tourism recovery in South Asia, focusing on eight countries with the Asian Development Banks. So I think last week, I was very honored to be joining several here where the Kentucky State now $75 million grants on tourism recovery statewide. So I feel very lucky to be there, also learn about different tourism priorities here. I, further than that, I also work with the Food and Agriculture Organizations of the United Nations, developing a new tourism model that integrates agriculture and sustainable tourism in the Mecon Delta of South Asia. So just to name some of the projects, other than that, I work a lot on capacity training for tourism officials at both local and national governments, and also I do a lot of community-based tourism development as well, because it's actually one of my core expertise and also ecotourism. So that's why when I come here, I'm very excited in the Trail Town application, because it's really bringing out all the ecotourism and with a very strong focus on sustainability as well. So I've been working with the special project team, Rebecca and Blair, and also Robin from the tourism office on working on these applications. Other than that, I think for the past three weeks, I've been having a lot of chances to see different activities in action, democracy in actions, and especially joining meetings like this is also a way for me to see a very different America that I would never be able to see if I'm not coming here. So it's been a great time and a great time with the City of Frankfurt, and also wanted this opportunity to say thank you to all the city officials who have been taking very good care of me, showing me a very different America, and I really appreciate that, and thank you for giving me the chance to speak here today, and great to be here once again, and I wish you all the best. Thank you very much. Thank you.
First, you do so many different things, that you had time to come here is great. And I'm curious, how many languages do you speak?
I speak Vietnamese, English, and a bit of Korean, South Korean.
Oh, okay. So when you're meeting with different countries in Malaysia, that maybe you speak English with them?
Yeah, mainly I speak English, but we work with mainly regional association, and also at a lot of national governments, they are capable of speaking English. So we use English quite widely across South Asia.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Press.
Yes. I also wanted to add that I have been working very closely with Blair Hecker on our Town Gown Initiatives, and we have a huge surprise coming, hopefully to banners near us down on Broadway, that we are going to be highlighting, maybe, correct me, I think 12 individuals from Kentucky State University that have graduated, may be attending, or have served in sub-capacity. That is on the behalf of all of our Town Gown Initiatives, and there will be banners of people that have been selected to start this off of the road of greatness for Kentucky State University, where have they landed? So I'm super excited to be working with Blair on that. So we are hoping to look for banners maybe tomorrow to start being up, and then Blair and I are working on a QR code where you could walk by the individuals and scan, and it will go to their bio, so you can learn a little bit about them, where they located them. So we're still working on that, but super excited that hopefully they'll be installed tomorrow. So that's a big surprise to the community and to Kentucky State, so we've been working really hard on that. So thank you, Blair, for working really hard on that, and see you in that third.
We have a ceremonial recognition. We'll move on to citizens. This is Breast Cancer Awareness Month as well. Did we do a resolution for October?
We did it for last year.
And both years.
Yep.
We should move a resolve to do that again this year.
Yes.
Oh, we did it for both, both years. When we did it last year, we did it for last year and this year.
We did it for, we resolved for two years in our home.
And I believe it's also Indigenous Persons Day?
Yes. That's what it is?
Yes.
We'll move on to citizens' comments. A couple, I, we'll ask you to come up and state your name. Jay Williams, you're first. State your name, organization, if any, and give you five minutes.
Jay.
And borrow his timing, right?
Thank you very much. I'm Jay Williams. Might have to spell the names. G-E-X, pronounced J. Well, it's pronounced J only in Kentucky. Closest anybody else comes to the front of the name is J. But no Kentuckyan was gonna say that. We pronounce it more like for sales, right? J. I'm with, I'm ready to be your next state senator, hopefully joining the General Assembly to represent you all. I have, I've been having a great time reconnecting to Frankfurt. I was up here for eight years in the 90s. It was a great time. I commuted every day. Was back four years as a state employee in the last decade. I really enjoyed Frankfurt. I really enjoyed the people. I was down at Delly Graham Park at the end of Summer Festival, felt very welcome, talked to a lot of people. It was great being there. And what, I want to give you just a little bit of, I got one constituent that says you've got to talk to him about this, and that's maintaining two lanes up and down Capitol Avenue along with parking. That was their biggest issue, that we're concerned that it might be shut down, and I'm getting a number of feedback that maintaining those two lanes is something that the local residents want. I'm sure you all have heard both sides of that too, but I promised them I would say that, so I've said that now. And I will work for you very hard to do what you need. I will represent you. It's been over 20 years since I was in the legislature, but I was there for eight years, and I have more seniority than half the Senate right now, which means I can go back day one, January 3rd, and go to work for you all and for this, and you will be, I represent my constituents in my district and the interests of that. So I'm looking forward to getting some impact put from you all over the years. One of the things, I've actually already made some inquiries, it's gonna be a tough issue, but I've talked about fees in lieu of taxes. I know you have an issue. I know there's an antiquated outdated payment that is made, unbelievable, and it's amount, and I got pushback, okay? But I think because I'm within the supermajority, and I can work from the inside out of that supermajority, that I can get something done, that we can get some more fair payment. I need some input from you all, but I think that's one of the intuitively obvious things that needs to be done into the legislature. It's in the position to help you out, and I think because of my experience building coalitions in the past of getting the impossible done, it takes a little bit longer, but I like people to get along well, I think I can make that happen. And there's a few other people around the state, it's not just Frankfurt, that have some issues with that, so I think we can work on that. Other than that, I'm just, you know, feel free to talk to me. I'm looking forward to really being your representative. I'm looking forward to being here on a daily basis. I am retired. I never thought I would be back again, but I am, and my wife is very glad that I am. She's like, I got the old Jay back. You were out of the house, lost a few pounds, probably will lose a few more before this is over. You know, I campaigned, door-to-door walking, planting some signs in the yards, maybe sometimes three or four times I'm planting those signs. All having fun, a lot, and so, and getting to know you all. So my door's open to you. I hope to represent you all well, and just let me know whatever I can do to help you all out. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for joining.
Just be cautious of placing your signs in city right-of-ways and blocking vision, please. Thanks.
Sure.
Thank you, Jay.
I think, I think somebody is acting as a sign police in the community. Right?
Yes, that is right.
Okay, next, Tina Jackson.
All right, I'm new at this.
You're welcome.
We need to give you a big enough table.
This is for you all.
Okay.
My name is Tina Jackson. I live at 106 Hillview Court here in Frankfurt. I'm here to ask the city to seize the sober living housing currently at the address 102 Hillview Court. I'm providing the Declaration of Restricted Covenants as supporting documents filed in Frank County. I'm also including amendments that I pulled from the PDA yesterday. I've visited the city, City Hall several times within the past 15 days, I'd say, regarding parked cars wrapped around the home in the yards and on the main entry of Village Green. I've struck a view of vehicles and school buses, making their parents unpleasant. I've inquired whether the city is aware that there is a sober living house in a residential area that has a declaration, a Declaration of Restricted Covenants. The city informed me that they are not aware. Homeowners were not made aware that a sober living setting was being planned and felt disregarded from the beginning. There are folding chairs and weight bench on the front porch. The current owner purchased the home in 2017 and immediately started to prepare the home for multi-purpose. I live at 106 Hillview, right next door. The locked side door is empty, so I can see. I witnessed them preparing bunk beds, and then we're gonna move on forward. Currently, the home is being rented out to a Deaton and Deaton Counseling, which rents out beds or rooms to the men and women he counsels. I've made a, I have made the second party and Deaton and Deaton both aware of these restrictions, both office visits, because I think face-to-face is the best way. I made two attempts to talk to Sweeney, but he was not available each time, which that was last week. And today, I went back to follow up to make sure that he received the information that I left in his office last week, where he was, and they said he was in a Zune. Okay, I just took that and went on. So I received a call from his attorney today, and basically he said they're doing nothing wrong. Okay? I visited Deaton Deaton. I had to do some investigating. Believe me, this was not easy, and I'm gonna sum this up, because it's only a little bit, and I'm gonna leave this to you all. I visited Deaton Deaton last Friday. I did not leave him the Declaration, because he is not the owner, okay? But I wanted him to be aware of the information I had. Well, I received rebuttal, and I'm just gonna leave it there. So I ended the conversation, because I was there to deliver a message. I wasn't there to debate or discuss in detail, detail about what the situation is, because he does not own a land over there. Okay? With that said, regarding decision-making, I've always considered all parties that may be affected by any action I make. I have not been on a senseless journey, nor have I ever shown disregard for people or taken things for granted. I have worked diligently for most of my life, retiring from state government last year. I respect my home and surroundings and hope to enjoy home. The current owner never reached out to the community to discuss their plans, slighting behaviors, and showing no regard for others who would be affected. Having an SCL home next door to my home has and is caused me distress. Other property owners within the community have expressed the same feeling. One is legally blind. The setup next door has recreated more safety concerns and possibly decreasing value of our homes and property. Before my meeting at City today, the fire and EM mask were at the 102 residence. I witnessed a stretcher going in.
One minute left.
Okay. Please include the house at 118 Hillview Court, the owner, and the number of men living at the residence, possibly housing workers, causing a nuisance. I would like to hand you all some information, if that's something that you all will accept. Do I walk up there yet? I don't know if I've made enough copies, but we'll see how.
We can make more. You can start that way, and I can always make more copies.
Okay. Two, I just wanted to make an email on you all, so you follow.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And it won't be hard to do. Got two.
Is that the 102 Hillview?
Correct. There's two houses that's causing a nuisance.
What's 106 Hillview? 106 Hillview Court?
That's for you there, ladies.
Thank you.
The 106.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
The 106 is where you live?
106 is where I live. It's on there. I've got it on this plot. I've got my name, and I've got the empty lot, and I've got the sober living, which is right off the main entry, and I don't think that's.
I have you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. We will look into it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all for citizens' comments. We'll start with staff reports.
It's great. Thank you, Mayor. Katie Beard is here to give the Board of Commissioners a heads-up on the Solid Waste Management Plan Resolution that we adopt jointly with the county, and it's adopted every five years. Katie is here to give a little background on that.
Yep, so I guess at the next meeting, we'll be asking for your approval of a resolution to accept this five-year plan. It'll go into effect January of 2023, and I don't know how many of you all have seen it. I can send you a copy or a link to the, one that's in effect right now is on the Franklin County Waste Management webpage. But basically, it's a report and a plan that's required to be submitted to the Division of Waste Management each year. That's all the information in Franklin County about our solid waste programs. So I'm just gonna touch on some of the highlights and answer any questions you all have about it. Some of the things that this plan does is set goals. So it not only describes what we're doing and where disposal is taking place, but it sets goals for us to come throughout the next five years. Some of these things involve our collection system, identifying the number of small businesses and interest for city-county trash and recycling, so maybe looking at expanding to some of the small businesses. Increasing our education and outreach, there's a big focus on that in these next five years. We want to focus on zero waste. There's a lot in here about composting and different options that we can pursue on that front. Exploring anaerobic digestion with community partners, so us working together, city and county, to take on some of these initiatives. More public disposal areas, maybe more dumpsters, more recycle drop-off locations around the city. Exploring the option of solar energy infrastructure at the closed parts of the Benson landfill. Like I mentioned, develop a pilot program for zero-waste office facility. That may be something the county's specifically looking into, but for us to focus on different events that will lead, will help with zero waste and composting and all of the ways that we can be environmentally friendly. So there's a focus on collections, recycling, environment, and then there's litter. Some of the goals with litter, again, education and outreach, evaluate the programs that we have in place and see if there's opportunity for expansion of those. Expand the clean team program, which is something we're already doing, but encompass the use of civic groups to help expand that. And then, of course, enforcement of littering and illegal dumping and all those types of things. But this plan just goes through the budget, what the money is used for, just defining that, that there is a budget available to cover all of these programs. So it's pretty straightforward. There's not a whole lot of difference in the two plans, other than the goals that I just kind of went through, because a lot of the goals that we identified in the last five years, we did make progress on. So that is it in a very brief nutshell. So if you all have any questions, just let me know.
Ms. Unger.
I just wanna say, I enjoy being a part of the process. I didn't attend every meeting, but the ones I did, it was good to talk about the goals, and like you said, seeing what we sort of checked off and then, you know, what we needed to set for the future. So I enjoyed being a part of that process.
Any other questions for Katie?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I had one general question. What is the next step on the five-year plan?
What's the next step?
Yeah.
There's not a clear timeline identified. It's just a listing, as far as this plan. I think we probably want to take this and sit down internally and put a timeline to some of that. So, I mean, I know some of these things we're already kind of thinking about. We've got a compost pad at the carpenter farm that we use for our leaf and brush to create compost there, and then we're exploring options on food composting. So that's one example of something we're already kind of thinking about and moving towards, so we'll just incorporate these goals into our programs.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. And next up, we have our Emergency Management Director, Tommy Russell, to provide a little update on preparations for sheltering this winter.
Good afternoon. How are you all?
Good afternoon.
So maybe a couple of months back, somebody asked about a plan for homeless. There's not really a plan. You know, the plan is that we know all the assets that are available to us. I think we do have a community resource bible out there per se that lists every contact for all of the agencies that we need, and I think Ms. Hecker and Ms. Hearn are updating that as we speak. It used to be taken care of by an outside agency, but they're working on it now, so, you know, this is not like a flood that I can prepare for a flood. I know that Travis Bottom, Big Eddie, when they flood, I'm gonna get X number of people come, you know, and ask for housing. You know, these are mostly individual cases that come to us either through law enforcement or public contact or 911 calls, things of that nature. So to be able to put together a plan, a definite plan for those, every one of them every one of those cases is different. You know, if it's a single mother with kids, you know, I can't send them to access. If it's a lone male, you know, we can go to access as long as they're able to go to access and haven't been kicked out of there. So, we, I believe we are on the right track with the Simon House. And that partnership, that, to me, it appears to be the quickest route to take a number of individuals off the street, to be honest with you. You know, and make no doubt that the more the leaves come off the trees, the more calls we'll get because people can see where they've been staying, you know. Just because I get a call and I go meet up with an individual that's homeless and I say, hey, I can get you to the Hope Center in Lexington. I don't wanna go Lexington, you know. I'm gonna stay here. Or I've got a dog, well, they won't take pets. Well, I'm not going without a dog, you know. So every one of those calls for us is different. I think the plan, just knowing what assets are available in the community for us, is the biggest help we've got. I did see, was reading an article today, the Hope Center's got like 260 beds and they've got 160 field or 175 field right now. So there's, there is some room. But you have to remember, just because somebody says, you know, I need someplace to stay and my only option is to go to Lexington, and they say no, then, you know, what else do we do? We can always do warming centers. Let me say that. There's a difference between overnight stay and a warming center. So a 24-hour warming center is someplace where we'd set up tables and chairs. Individuals would come in and sit there. As long as there's not a cot for them to sleep on, it fits a different set of codes, fire codes, okay? Access Shelter is set up as a warming center, as well as overnight stay. I think the Simon House, when they get staffing available, they could increase their capacity that way also. Just because they've got somebody there 24/7 right now. The Access Center Shelter is the only place in Frankfurt that I know has 24-hour 7, 24/7 overnight help there, you know. Another option for us is we kept the pickback building. If we had to, we could set that up as a warming center, 24 hours, but then we have to staff it. So, you know. And it could be done, not very easily, but Ms. Ross would have to go through and say, this is what we can do, this is what we can't do, you know. We need to set up, put a set of parameters on this thing, what's right, what's wrong. So, this, this conversation is just like the homeless conversation, really. It's not very easy to solve, you know. The best thing about this is as long as we know the resources that are out there, that's how we direct the individuals. Any questions?
Ms. Russell, thank you for coming today to talk with us about this issue. Is there a way to figure out if we were doing the warming center, minimum requirement of staffing needs, of what that impact may look like from the number of people? And then, we might be able to look at a budget impact.
Depending on where it goes, I think the square footage comes into play somehow. But, that's, I don't think there are very many requirements, per se, Ms. or two, that go along with a warming center. They just cannot lay down as, on a cot or something like that as an overnight stay. Now, how long do we let them stay there? You know, I need to get a caseworker into work this, you know. They're gonna leave soon as the doors open the next day. But we can figure, I can figure that if we, if that's what we wanna do, to see what set of parameters we need to put on. Let's, just, let's just take the pickback building. Just because it was divided off when we first got it for that purpose, just in case it happens. So, I will get with Chuck Knowles to see how much that area is and see how many people can fit in there. I'll have to ask the Fire Marshal or Chief Frisco to see what that does, but we'll work that from that angle if that's what you all want. Just in case, as a just in case, you know. Like I say, most of the time I don't get 10 calls. I'll get one call every five or six days, you know, something like that, when it gets colder. And, and we'll see an uptick at the shelter a little bit. But they are prepared for that, you know. And they know that they can create that 24-hour warming center. Women, right now, pose the biggest issue because we can't commingle that, that population over there in women with children. So it does create a little bit of an issue for us. But, that's something that we certainly can work on. I apologize that there's not a solid answer for this, but like I say, it's just like the problem. It's, it's very fluid. Every, every case is, is completely different, every single one of them.
Just to update the B O C, the, the head of the Simon House came over and signed the letter of intent, so we'll cut a check for 50,000. And that's to hire specifically staff so they can be, be able to accept individuals overnight, for overnight shelters. So that will happen next week.
So I remember people that can sleep overnight. We can still, we'll see what the numbers and what they're comfortable with to make, to get them to create a warming center. Because we, we can go above and beyond that, that sleeping capacity there.
Ms. Heron.
Just wanna, from my own point of clarification here, wanna make sure that when we end this conversation today, if we, you know, moving forward, if we find ourselves in a situation where the infrastructure we have in place and the organizations are being overran, what is the next step for us to come back and say, hey, let's get moving on this warming center? You know, it's October 10th, so we're coming into that time. Is there gonna be anything that we need to do or be thinking down the road to set them up to where? You know, what would be the, what would be the turnaround time if we said?
For us to, to start a warming center?
Yes, sir.
Running for the city?
Yes, sir.
City and the county?
Yes, sir.
Because that would, I would bring them into the fold also. Well, I could probably have that up and running in two days, as long as we can find staffing, you know.
Right.
I don't know any department here that's got that staff available. And I don't think that's especially train staff.
Right.
I think that's just oversight, you know, somebody to watch over the population that's in there. I think the bathrooms are ready. We had that done last time.
When we were preparing last year.
Yeah. So I think that's.
Pickback building, right?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I think the heat is on, it's propane, it's still gas heat. So, I think that building is essentially ready should we need it.
Are there any volunteer groups, like Rotary or any other support groups that would be able to help with staffing or?
So, a couple of years ago, back during one of the events, maybe a flood or something, we started a whole page and Blair was taking care of it for me, about people that wanted to volunteer. It's amazing how many people wanna volunteer from 9 until 4. Now, when I get 9 P M. to 4 A M., it's amazing how many volunteers I can't find. So, but we have reached out to those groups. I'm, my guess, it's gonna be just like Access. She sends me, I need this many people, you know. They're paying X number of dollars an hour. I'm guessing that's the route we would, we would have to go, to find somebody. Because, you know, again, I would lean on Mrs. Ross and a social worker to say, how long are we gonna keep these people here? How long do they stay? You know, most of, most of these issues are, are not short-term, you know. It's seven days, are we gonna run this for seven days? Are we gonna run this till the temperature breaks? Are we gonna keep this going until, you know, barge? You know, it's, it's just, it'd be knee-driven. But, the building itself, that's, that's the simplest part.
I think we did something similar with cooling days when it was really hot. And how did that work out?
So cooling and warming are both the same. So, that's a relatively simple one, you know. Most of the time, the men's shelter had, they had a temperature, maybe 28 degrees or something like that, when it would go above 28 degrees and they would, they would increase their capacity and start their, their warming center. I know the Salvation Army was on board during the daytime. Thornhill, Thornhill Learning Center was on board then, when we had to eat weight. And I think they would do the same for the, for the warming center, as well as we did the cooling center. So, there are several different places out there. Just the overnight stay is the most difficult. And I would reach out to every volunteer agency just with a blast, you know, a major blast email that says, hey, anybody that wants to help with this. And it's easy to find staff during the daytime. It's relatively easy. There are a lot of people that are committed to this community in the daytime, but it gets difficult for overnight stay. Because, you know, if it's all men or something like that, I, I wouldn't want a female watching over the gang. So we'd have to find, we would have to be, you know, kinda looked at in that, in that light, to make sure everybody's safe and situations don't arise that come into play. I think we had, I think we had an intake form that we'd started working on one time, that law enforcement looked at with us. No drugs, no, can't be drunk, no weapons, those kind of things. So, you know, that's already done. Like I said, it's just getting implemented with personnel.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Next up we have Penny Peebler and Blair Hecker are here to present on the, our new initiative, I Am Kentucky Distilled, which is a key activity under our strategic plan priority, the story of Frankfurt. Really appreciate Penny and Blair and Rebecca working hard with our community partners. We've had several meetings to get together, work together, to help us articulate a unified positive message on Frankfurt.
Thank you, Laura. And thank you, Board of Commissioners, for having me as your strategic initiatives consultant this year. As Laura said, we are working very hard on that priority of the story of Frankfurt. And you know, there is a, there's a tourism component of that, but there really is a civic pride portion of that, something that contributes to our livability. And as Laura said, the city of Frankfurt has been acting as a convener for our community partners in this effort. As you know, the work was started in 2019, 2017, excuse me, under civic leadership. And we felt that post-COVID, you know, this was the time to make sure that we're continuing to take that brand that was established, Kentucky Distilled, and to really live into that. With a, with a civic pride campaign that we could put together ourselves with, with some support from our friends at the Frankfurt Plant Board. And you'll hear more about that later. As well, we'll show you a rough cut of one of our first spots that will air on Cable 10 as a part of our civic pride campaign. So I wanna ask Blair to come up before we do that and talk a little bit about some of the things that came up as we've been convening the groups.
So, the idea for this specific campaign kind of came about among our partner agencies, myself, Rebecca Hall, Dr. Eleanor Haskin Wagner with our museum, K C D C, The Chamber, D F I Tourism, the Frankfurt Plant Board. And all of these partners, we meet together regularly to discuss communication, marketing, branding. Specifically, what we hope to achieve, something that is different with this campaign than other campaigns we've launched, is we want this campaign to focus on exactly what Penny said, that civic pride. So this campaign is really geared towards our residents. I think that it opens the doors for a larger campaign later on. But really, the idea was that we want to re-engage our own community and help remind our own community about all the great things that Frankfurt has and why we each are proud to be part of the Frankfurt community. And so, the tagline, I too am Kentucky distilled. You guys are familiar with our branding and the brand narrative that goes along with that. And really Rebecca gets a lot of credit for coming up with really centering this campaign, focusing back on that tagline, I too am Kentucky distilled. Bringing it back to all of those things that make us the best of Kentucky. And so we have with that, that group of partners that I just talked about, we came together, did brainstorming. And we've put together a list of campaign spots that you're gonna see. You're gonna get to see the first one tonight. Just kind of a rough cut of what we're thinking. And so we have put together a list of about 12 of these that will be rolling out in the next few months. And so we have representatives that everyone in the community is hopefully going to recognize, from across all of our different sectors. We have our tourism, our, the many different ways that we do tourism here, represented government, both state and local, our local businesses, a couple of different local businesses, students, high school and college students, agriculture, the arts, our faith community. And through that, I think we have a good representation of newer residents, as well as lifelong residents. So I really think that it's gonna be something that is going to invigorate our entire community.
So these short television spots that you'll see the rough cut of, the first one this evening, are the beginning of this civic pride campaign. Another component of that is a podcast series that will feature 52 issues focusing on different Frankfortonians, talking about what they believe makes Frankfurt special. It's a citizen-to-citizen campaign. We're working with Dr. Eleanor Haskin Wagner, who is already a great podcaster and has a, a podcast following, to help us launch that series in the coming year. And so without further ado, I'd like to show you the rough cut of our first spot that we've written. And we've done this in-house. And thanks again to the Plant Board for, for producing it. It features Kathy Lindsey, so let's watch the video.
True Kentuckians know that the heart of the Commonwealth is the capital city. Perfectly positioned on the S-curve of the Kentucky River, between Louisville and Lexington, everything flows through Frankfurt. Our community embodies the essence of all that makes Kentucky special. From her natural charm and beauty, to her brains and her world-renowned bourbon, all in one distinctly spirited package. Frankfurt is Kentucky distilled. For me, it all starts in South Frankfurt, where I was raised and where I'm raising my own family. Walking down to Second Street to drop my daughter at school and over the historic bridge to get coffee or a meal made by local hands, seeing friends and neighbors along the way. I spend my days at the Plant Board and our Cable 10 studios talking about all the things that are important in our community and how we can face the challenges and opportunities together. I am proud to be part of this community. I too am Kentucky distilled.
Any questions? Thank you very much. We look forward to fine-tuning this and to rolling it out in the coming months.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Next up, we'll welcome Kenny Hodgson. Is here to present about some proposed changes to our sewer tap fee, which requires ordinance change. Just important to note, and from a little bit of history, about six years ago, there we responded to some requests from developers and other members of the community. And we lowered our sewer tap fee from about 2192.
2192.
2192 to 1,000, but only for single-family homes. Didn't quite, I think, add some of the spur of the development. But as we look at our fees and where we're going, we also realize that we need to make it a little bit more uniform. We don't need to penalize the townhomes and multifamily. So Kenny can talk a little bit more about our proposed changes.
Yeah, just like the city manager mentioned, under former city manager Tim Zizoff, he was, his goal in lowering this was to spur some single-family home dwellings, more, you know, development here in Franklin, Franklin County, Frankfurt and everything, just to hopefully get some more residents here. Unfortunately, it just, it hasn't taken off like what he had originally hoped. And so there's been a lot of confusion in developers of multifamily homes and, and things like that that have caused just this one part to be a little confusing. So, our goal in this is to, one, bring it back up a little bit. We're not gonna bring it all the way back up to 2192. But we're gonna kinda make it uniform somewhere in the middle of where we are for all of our surrounding communities. So what we're gonna propose for zone, for ordinance changes, to bring that up to a single $1,800 for any single-family residents, no matter what kind of this. And that way it's uniform across all, for everybody that has a 5/8 meter, except for businesses. It'd be the only difference. If a business has a 5/8, it's gonna be 2192. But, any residential 5/8 meter will be the, the single charge of $1,800. So, you know, I gave you a little bit of information on where the tap fee started, back when the consent judgment started and we had to do our sewer use ordinance. And just, literally this will be the third change since it was enacted. So, it's not like it changes very often. But, that's pretty much it. Any questions for that?
Can we get, see a list of the surrounding communities and what they charge?
I can. Some were, some were real cheap and some were very, very expensive.
I've heard that our sewer tap fees, and I don't know if this is correct or not, is a disadvantage for us in that it's why people don't develop.
Off the top of my head, Vercels is 2,000, Georgetown is 1,500. Vercels also has another fee that they charge. Vercels also has another fee that they charge on development, which is an added $1,300 charge. SD1, which is Northern Kentucky, is $3,800. But then you have, like, Paris is $300. That's the lowest one I found pretty much anywhere in this area. We have ranges from 800, 1,200. They're all, everybody's different. Lexington and Louisville are completely different as they, they have a formula that they use to, based on the square footage of the lot, multiple things that they, they add into there. So that's kind of, we just kind of took a, a middle road. We're right here in our area, and I'm still waiting to hear it from a couple of communities, but those are the ones that I've heard back from so far. But yeah, I can get you a list of everything in the surrounding areas.
And why they need to go to, to 1,800 now? We've been at 1,000 for six years.
It's just been confusing, and so this, we figure, let's figure on a middle ground. Let's get us back, because I think the 1,000 was a little bit low for what services that we provide. And it bumps it up, allows us to get a little extra income coming in. As you know, nothing gets cheaper as we move along, so, you know, just bumping it up and not bumping it up to that full 2192.
And Kenny, just to also emphasize, to clarify, that there's confusion because if you have a townhome, you're paying more. If you have a multifamily dwelling, you're paying more, and we wanted to make it uniform and encourage all that type of housing, not just single-family housing.
Right, that's what's confusing.
Yes, certainly.
Okay. I was like, what's confusing about $1,000?
Yeah, so what does a townhome cost right now?
A townhome, if it's shared walls right now, is 2192.
So that will stay the same?
The way.
No, we'll change it all to one.
Yeah, it will all be, any single-family residence that's a 5/8 meter will be 1,800. That's what we want to propose.
So lowering it to 1,000, we didn't see an uptick like we thought we would.
Well, in '21, we did 58 new tap permits, and so far in 2022, we've only done 37. So it's not got a whole lot of traction.
What is our actual cost when we hook up someone? Does it vary a lot?
The, the tap fee is basically, it's a capacity fee, so it's, it was a study that was done in 2007 for 2008 adoption. So basically, it takes what the normal flow from a single-family residence for a 5/8 meter and says, okay, this is what your cost is going to be for this, to reserve that, that amount of capacity for your wastewater plant. And that's the way it's, that's the way it was derived. There's, if you actually look in the ordinance, it shows all the individual meter sizes that you can get and then the capacity factor based on what meter it's using.
So just to clarify, we are raising it on certain residences, but you're lowering it on others, right?
Yes, yes. We're hoping to find that happy medium.
I just said, well, I just heard that that is a competitive disadvantage, and then now we're going and raising on single families. So, you know, I guess.
We've heard the same thing.
But that's why I want to see the surrounding communities and see where, are we really, is that really the reason? Or why would people be saying that?
Most of what you're gonna hear is from builders, and they're looking to get every penny they can out of building a home. And, you know, if a builder's building in Georgetown, they're gonna, they should charge their, you know, their $1,500. If they're building in Vercels, it's 2,000. It's just gonna be passed on to the homeowner eventually, is what it should be.
Thank you, Kenny.
Thank you.
Next up, Laura Ross. Just want to thank her and David Jones for bringing this change to our attention on our itinerant merchants, proposed ordinance change. I think it's a really good example. I know our staff has been thinking of ways to be responsive to the community and especially if there is proposed barriers. And Laura, explain more about how this lowers the cost for individual businesses who want to participate in our events.
Sure. So we have, I don't know if you all are familiar or have ever had the pleasure of reading through them, but we have a whole series of regulatory fees, some of which are rather antiquated and some of which are interesting and difficult to imagine where the particular fee amount came from when it was perhaps written 50 years ago. So one of these regulatory fees is for itinerant merchants. Itinerant merchants are basically defined as those that come into the city for a period of less than one year. They are here to sell their goods or services, food, alcohol, whatever, merchandise, whatever it might be. So a food truck is a perfect example. Our regulatory fee system has always required each of these temporary itinerant merchants to pay a $150 single-time or single-entity fee. And we have heard a lot of feedback that this just does not make sense for some of these itinerant merchants coming into town because they often don't make that much in profit. So we want to get rid of that $150 regulatory fee for those individual businesses that come in. At the same time, we will be getting rid of a $10 ice cream vendor fee that has, is one of those examples of something that makes no sense. Getting rid of that as well and revamping a little bit what we need to do for events and when we have groups of vendors that come in and how we best keep track of those and make that fair across the board. So this is really a first step in updating our regulatory process to be more business-friendly for those that we think reflect what the Board of Commissioners wants to see coming into the community and making their lives a little bit easier.
Sounds reasonable.
I think 150 was under any questions? So is this, in regards to food truck, I guess for me, I didn't think that $150 would have been extremely high being the much, as much money as they do bring in. But having a fee allowed us to keep on, to keep up with who's coming into our community. Does this allow trucks just to come into our community and set up wherever, whenever they want? And how will that affect or the primacy of when they come in or will they have to be invited into our community so they're not hindering our storefronts? Because I felt like that happened on East Main Street where we had something in the old Taco. We had the, what was it, the Chicken Place on East Main Street? And it went out of business because every day there was a Chicken Ring truck literally parked in the thing, and they went out of business. So now the chicken truck now owns that facility, you know? So I don't want that to happen to my local businesses in town for them just to pull in and park anywhere and basically run their business out of town.
Right. This would be, this would be mainly the fee that, that would be going away. And largely, we see that need for a lot of other regulatory fees that are supposed to be truly based upon the cost of regulation. So there are still going to be the other necessary licensing permitting requirements that would apply to any business that is setting up. So there will still be tracking, and we, especially for events, we want to make sure that we have that information when we have multiple food trucks and other, other entities setting up their temporary stations. We want to make sure we have all the information we need on this. So we're gonna work on some ideas over the next week or so to make sure that we're still capturing the information that we need, making sure that we are thinking about our existing brick-and-mortar buildings that do have business licenses and our license to be here all the time in the city. But still making it easier if we have somebody who wants to come in just for a specific event or a couple of times a year, you know, what it might, whatever that might be, to, to not prohibit them, be financially prohibitive for them to come in. So we are looking at all of that, and we'll give you guys a good update on that in a minute.
Thank you.
What's the penalty if we, if someone doesn't have a permit and they set up?
If they do, we do have an enforcement process, and, and David Jones often has to go out and about and look to see who is permitted and who is not. Usually, you know, if he finds that they haven't been permitted, then he works with them to get them permitted. But we do have an enforcement process on all of that. It's, it's actually a lot of work, the enforcement of a lot of these regulatory fees for our staff in addition to being cumbersome for businesses. So honestly, as we start to work through these regulatory fees, I think you'll see it's a win-win. We don't make that much money regarding the cost of regulating. You know, it's, it's not supposed to be a revenue-producing fee. It's just for the cost of regulation. So this is something where we can take a lot of the burden off both staff and businesses throughout the community. So other businesses will be seeing benefits from this too as we, as we proceed with, with revamping these fees.
Yes, and there's some ancient ones like bedding parlors.
Oh, yeah.
And they single out movie theaters. There's just, it's just very antiquated and strange, and so we want to streamline it.
Thank you, Laura.
And we'll move on to discussion items. First up, KCDC Quarterly Update, Terry Bradshaw. Welcome back.
Thank you. I want to just address something that you talked about a few minutes ago. The sewer tap-on fee, we actually, KCDC led the charge of that sewer tap-on fee lowering. It was, at the time, I, I, to be honest, I don't have any idea what the surrounding counties are now. I haven't looked at that in a while. But at the time, Frankfurt's sewer tap-on fee cost was about $1,000 over the next county in line and $2,000 over some of the other surrounding counties. So it was extremely out of line with surrounding counties. And the developers had come to us and said, it, I mean, it, amongst some other things, are causing us not to be able to develop here. I mean, we can just do it, and Kenny's right. I mean, people build houses to make money. That's the whole purpose. And they're gonna go someplace else if they can do it for less and make more money on the, on the other end. But I will say that I think in 2016, and this might, is Kenny in here? This might not be, this might not be the same number, but the single-family dwelling permits in the entire county in '15, '16 were like 10, 15, that's total. And so I'm assuming that would be the same as the tap-on fee, excuse me, the sewer tap-ons? Would there be another reason we would have a sewer tap-on without building a new home? So if last year was 57 in the city alone, it has, it did actually assist in some ways to increase the number of homes that were built, single-family homes that were built. So that was not my report, sorry, but you all brought that up, and I wanted to kind of give you a little bit of history about that. So I couldn't remember, honestly, when I was preparing this list. Was I here like three months ago? It seems like just yesterday. And I didn't want to repeat stuff that I had told you the last time, and I don't want to repeat the reports that I send you all. So I'll be very quick, do what.
No Facebook needed today.
Yeah, well, there you go. So I, as you all know, we developed a workforce strategy several months ago that included a number of things. The most recent thing that we have done to, that, that falls within that workforce development strategy is we are partnering with the BCTC, the Anderson County Facility, and Franklin County Schools to do a Bluegrass College Academy and then incorporate a youth leadership program into that academy. So one Friday every month from September through April, there will be a youth leadership academy that will be, it will be in line with the adult leadership program that we have here already. That program will be a partnership between the Frankfurt, excuse me, Franklin County School System and the Anderson County School System in that first pilot year. So that will begin next fall at the beginning of the school year. And then the Bluegrass College Academy will be as something similar to what Frankfurt Independent already does in that the students, except for that the students will go to the campus their junior and senior year and then graduate with an associate's degree. We continue to administer or work on getting reapplied for the workforce grant. As I mentioned, I think in the previous meeting, the Development Interest Group Frankfurt had begun to form. That group has written their bylaws, elected their board members, filed for a 501(c)(3), opened a bank account. So they are up and running, and as most of you attended, participated in, they had a, they had candidate forums for the various candidates that are running throughout the community. We just finished the Bourbon on the Banks event, and KCDC is in charge of the Friday night VIP event that recognizes, of course, one of our major industries in the bourbon industry. We did apply for a $1.2 million product development grant, which will pay for the development of an access road and then moving utilities closer to some industrial property we already have that is already zoned industrial property. KCDC will take care of the road development and the infrastructure. And then a private developer has agreed to, as a partner in that, develop the rest of that property into either build-ready or actual spec buildings, depending on the need, because we already have some projects that we're looking at the property. So we thought it would be a couple of spec buildings, and now we think it might be something different. As you, several of you attended earlier today, we have been working on for two years a regional development strategy with our partners in eight, eight counties that run along I-64. We presented that to about 40 people this morning throughout the community, and we've got another presentation in November. But then following that second presentation, we'll start to do fundraising, and then we will also have a, a full region meeting in Nov- November the 28th, I think that was the date, sorry. Anne Marie, will you correct me?
November 30th.
November 30th. Okay, thank you. And I encourage you all to attend that. If you did not get the information today at the meeting, I can forward that to you. But it, the development strategy, I won't go over it again because I know you've already heard it once today. But it focuses on some things that, it's not everyday development things that each of our organizations would do, but it is about three overall big topics that we believe that should be focused on as a region. Workforce development being one of the largest ones, leadership development and advocacy for businesses being another one. And then just the overall marketing of our community and developing land and buildings because if, without those, we can't do any economic development. So they're fairly broad categories, but in that November 30th meeting, what we'll do is come up with action items and who will be responsible for those action items throughout the next several years as we try to implement the plan that we just presented earlier today. As part of our business, oh, yes, ma'am.
Before you go on, I just had a couple of questions tied into that. Sure. So I thought right now it'd be good. I, I was there, of course, and I, I thought it was a very good discussion, kind of panel-type discussion. Did you consider taping that? Because I know there's some people that couldn't make it, and other people would like to know what was said.
Well, if you'll notice, we didn't even have heat there today because the bank was closed. And so we did not have access to any recording. We didn't have access to any of those things. But we, if any of you attended, the mayor can vouch for this. If any of you attended the meeting that I had at my office previously where I had 25 people in our conference room, it was totally the opposite. It was about 200 degrees in there that day. So we couldn't have it there, and we are thankful for Whittaker Bank for allowing us to do that, but we just didn't have access to anything because there was no staff there.
Well, I know the county has the owl, and I don't know if that's movable, but that would have maybe been a way to do it. And then I know there's the 54-page report. Can that be sent to all of us?
Absolutely, sure.
Okay, that'd be good. And, and I think too, the shortened version that we had at the meeting, I don't see it right, oh, this one, if you could forward that to the commission also.
Yeah, I'll just send you both of them.
Helpful because it's kind of a.
An executive summary, yeah.
So, yeah, and I would ask that, like the 54-page report, if that could just be on your website. Isn't that public information that people might want to know about?
Could be, sure.
Okay, so posting.
It is on, I'm sure, the Commerce Lexington and Bluegrass Alliance websites. Those are actually the entities. But I don't think they'd have a problem with us putting it on ours.
Well, yeah, and that'd be, your website would be where we'd think of going, so that would be helpful. Okay, thank you.
Okay, did I get all those?
Yep, I'm done.
As part of our business retention and expansion program, we had on Friday our annual employer appreciation event. We had about 40 some odd golfers representing business and industry. That event is sponsored by the BIM Group and Independence Bank, and it was a wonderful day for golf. I took credit for that. They took credit for the lunch and golf. Empower Frankfurt, of course, we continue to have those monthly. We, since we, I saw you all last, I think we did B and B. We, since we, I saw you all last, I think we did B&amp;Bs, B&amp;B at the Meeting House. That's hard to say, which are the, Bree and Brad Peters are the new owners of the Meeting House. They hosted the girls there for an evening and showed us the renovations that they've made. It's beautiful. If you get a chance, go down there. They're going to do happy hour drinks at some point in time in the bistro. So watch for that. You'll want to go down and see the changes they've made. We also did, oh, the Digg Group presented to them in July, I believe. And then tomorrow, Wednesday of this month, we have Mitzi Gaviden, who is going to talk about all things election, since that's coming up. So November, I believe, we're a part of the Umbrella Alley Project. I can never remember the name of it, I apologize. But I believe that that is going to be our event in November. And then we have 38 projects that are in progress. We have another 25 active projects that we continue to work. And the difference in those is that projects in progress are projects that have committed to being here. So Bourbon 30 is a project in progress. They're here, they haven't opened yet, you know, still working with them on, I think last week was a business license issue, and two weeks before that, they were trying to get a meter checked. So we continue to work with those projects. They're committed, they're coming, but they haven't opened the doors yet. That's when I call them complete, is when they put people to work. And then the active projects are just ones that have reached out. We're looking for land, we're looking for a building, I need a three-person office space, whatever. But we haven't landed them yet, so those are the differences.
Any questions?
I don't really have so much of a question rather than a statement, but I really enjoyed the presentation this morning. I enjoyed the invite, and I look forward to seeing what the next step is with that, as I do want economic development to thrive, and anything that we can do to help that, that's what I want to do. And with that being said, I would like, you know, for us to look into, and you may have the verbiage for this, I'm not sure, but I remember the young man from Lexington area, I believe it was, stated that they were so serious about it that the fundraising is about to occur and that he put $50,000 forward to show how they want to be part of this regional group. And I would like for us to look to see what that may look like from our standpoint, to say, we are here, we want to work regionally with our eight other counties and things to see how we can grow and things, and if that is something we need to look at maybe in our next round of that $1 million we pulled from our rainy day fund that we've all spoken on economic development. Economic development, we want it to be here. I think that that may be the first thing for us to look into, if we could get some more information on them giving the $50,000 and to seeing what we may be able to put toward that to push that. I don't know what that verbiage was, but I remember that, so.
So for the young man from Lexington first, Bob or Luther are going to die when they hear you said that. They're going to be so excited. So I think it was Bob who said that Lexington, the community, had matched the first $50,000, so that is correct. And Mike and Rob, who are the fundraisers, they're with, I don't remember the name of their group, they're going to kill me, but Mike and Rob are the guys that will be reaching out to those, the folks who were invited to attend today, the folks who were invited to attend on November 1st. There is a large price tag to that entire project, and it will take funding from a variety of stakeholders to make that happen. So I will be sure to tell them that, that they are interested, and ask them to provide you with some information.
I would appreciate that.
Sure, I'll be happy to.
So we can definitely put that on our moving forward and looking at funds that we're moving around and things. I think that that would probably behoove us as a community and behoove us in that economic development area to get on. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, for us, for KCDC, I'm going to make the same recommendation as well as to Franklin County Industrial Development Authority. It's a, you know, we don't have any, hardly any money in our marketing accounts at all, I mean, our marketing budget. So for us, it'd be a great way for us to spend $5,000 and get a $50,000 bang for our bucks. So that's probably our plan also.
Thank you.
About November 30th, they're going to talk about the budgetary aspect of this, and that's when they're going to make their ask, if that's what they said today, isn't it?
No, they'll come to you individually to make the ask. And they have a list. We've gone through the list for each of our communities. And then, of course, we introduce them to those folks, which is what we.
Price tags on that summary.
Yeah, and it's a large one. But it's not counties, so, you know, it's not.
One thing that I thought about after the meeting was that I don't think there was any discussion about infill, of using properties we already have with buildings on them. Is that something?
Well, yeah, remember, this is a regional project. And so it'd be hard for me to work on infill in Winchester. So infill's kind of your own, you know, your own local.
Well, they talked though about working together to find places for things that they didn't have the resources for. And everyone, I think, has properties that they want to infill. But that wasn't emphasized in any way that I noticed, which would be something that would be possibly valuable.
Yeah, I, no, I think infill is certainly valuable. I just think that's one of the things that they anticipated each individual community would address in their own individual community, as opposed to it being a regional project. In the, in the land and building development that they addressed today, they are talking about some funds and ways that we can use funds that are available for the development of mega sites, regional industrial parks, those kind of things, which obviously would be a more regional approach, as opposed to the infill, which would be more focused, more led, better led by each local community as to where you want that infill to be. Does that make sense?
It does, and that's true. I guess from the standpoint of sharing resources and information and kind of working together as a team, which was emphasized, like if the county doesn't have space for something, maybe another area does. If you have some unique property that someone could use, then sharing that information to.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we already do that. You are correct. Yeah, we already do that. We all have a listing, a running listing of all the properties that we have available within our communities. We have some size, size criteria for each of those because, I mean, I can't list every piece of property I have that's two offices, and, you know, it would be obsolete before I got done. But the larger properties, yeah, we do share those.
Okay.
Thank you, Terry.
Thanks. Next up, I'd like to welcome Sheila Burton from the King Center. She and our other next two presentations are from organizations that receive subsidies from the city commission budget. Just a friendly reminder, Sheila, we have five minutes allotted to you. This doesn't include Q and A, and if we want to extend time, happy to, from the Board of Commissioners. So welcome, thank you for coming.
Well, thank you all for inviting me. I wasn't sure what you were anticipating, so I don't have a prepared speech, but I do want to take this opportunity to thank the city for your support. King Center's been around since 1996, and, you know, we started as an all-volunteer grassroots effort in South Frankfurt. Randy Bacon was the founder, and I was on that first board that developed the King Center, and here I am 20-some years later, still on this board. But I think it's a good organization. I think we do a lot for the community. Obviously, I thought I'd tell you just a little bit about our mission very shortly. I mean, you all read our material, and I think you are very familiar with the King Center. But, you know, we're there to assist families and children in basic things that they deal with on a day-to-day basis, day-to-day basis, that we have enrichment programs that are geared toward working on the academic and social skills of these kids, character building, and recreational, cultural, and artistic experiences. We try sometimes to find things to expose these children to that they might not be exposed to. So they, at one time, we had a very good canoe program. That's not something that you would generally see our kids doing, but thanks to community partners at counseling, you know, we had overnight camping, things that some of these children probably would not do. Were we not, what was, if the King Center was not developing programming to steer them in that direction. You know, for the overnight camping, I mean, that's just not something that I would do. And we even had to force our director to camp overnight. So, but the kids loved it, and it was a great experience for them. When we were looking at our programming, we, I would like to tell you what our six programming goals are. And we have a catalog of programs. We don't, we can't do them all at once, and we kind of rotate them in and out over the years. But first, we look for activities that involve problem-solving and conflict resolution, positive thinking, character development, self-discovery, relationship-building, and personal and group responsibility. And so our kids range from ages 6 through 18. We obviously kind of lose interest in kids coming to the King Center when they get to high school. They don't want to come there, so it's a different type of programming that we have to develop to keep in touch with them. And, but for the younger students, they are there basically after school. So we have three types of programming hours. During the school year, we're open from 3:00, 2:45 to 6:00. School bus brings the kids to the King Center. During the break, which their own break right down, at least the city schools for their three-week break, and anybody from the county who can get there at that time, our hours are from 10:00 to 3:00. And then during the summer, we're open at 8:00 in the morning until 1:00. At the 1:00, we did that because we did not want to interfere with the South Frankfurt Community Center hours. And so at 1:00, we would walk the kids to the Ollie Graham Park, and they would be under their direction. Some of the, I guess you might be interested in our funding. Again, you know, we rely very heavily on funding from the city. We do get some funding from the county. Most of our funding is then donations and fundraising. We have been a recipient of some very generous grants, a couple from COSA charities, and from some of the local businesses and organizations. You might have seen the Mirator gave us a very generous donation. Buffalo Trace generally gives us a very generous donations. And we factor these donations that we anticipate into our budget. So we have a budget of about $102,000. We did submit a budget to you all that shows a deficit, but we're, we're not anticipating that we will have any funding trouble. We're showing about a $5,000 deficit or less money that we're going to take in, that we're going to spend, but, you know, we are very judicious with our money. We do have some savings that we put back for rainy days. We have not been able to do our regular fundraising. Most organizations have a signature fundraising event. We do too, but ours just happens to be one that everyone has to gather in one space, and so we haven't been able to do that for the past three years. But we are looking forward next year to resuming our fundraising, but we think we've done very well. You know, our donations have picked up. We have an annual fundraising letter that we send out. And so we feel like we're on a, in a good shape, in good shape financially. And there have been times when we didn't know if we were going to have to go into our pockets as board members to pay the bills. But this community has been very generous with us, and we feel very fortunate that, you know, I can stand here and say that we're going to be open, we're going to be open for another 26 years, I hope. I won't be on the board. So I'll stop at that and let you all ask any questions that you have.
Sheila did such a great job.
Okay.
Well, no, I have a ton of one. Thank you for coming.
Sarah.
Just a quick question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Serving boys and girls, is it about equal boys and girls, or?
It is right now, and, you know, about seven or eight years ago, you know, our kids get out in the street and play, and Kay Scott, who's over the City of Angels, noticed that we had all of these young boys that were about five, six years old. And it was more boys than girls, and sure enough, you know, we, that hit us about a couple of years ago, where, you know, we had all of these young teenage boys that we had to find programming for. But, you know, it's kind of evened up now. So we're seeing an equal number of boys and girls.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Kelly Anderson from Thornhill Education Center. Thank you, Kelly, for coming on down.
I feel like I'm on the Family Feud on that minute, you know? When is she going to push the button? Sorry, I didn't bring my pom-poms or wear green, but I'm just going to whip through this, 4 minutes 32 seconds. We continue, we continue to do free GED and free services for everybody. Right now, we're ranked in the top 10, still provide childcare for people, ESL. And what else do we provide? Childcare and transportation. You've seen that big white van drive around. We continue to grow. We're ranked in the top 10 right now, and that's after the first quarter. We generally are in the top five, and as any, all of you know me, you know where I want to be. I want to be number one. I don't want to be the fourth loser. Community Garden continues to grow. It's getting bigger. Eddie Fowler's in charge of that. He's growing weird mushrooms downstairs. They are all legal. He has sold pounds of them to a restaurant in Louisville to help us. Met with Rhonda Joyce Foundation. You all know they got a big grant the other day, and they're going to be able to have four full-time members, and we have opened our doors to them to have programming free of charge in there. And we think that'll be another good thing. We had the federal government about a month ago, well, Kentucky Adult Education, of course, picked Thornhill to come and observe. And so the federal government, one of our grantee, you know, grants, came in. They observed me in the jail, which is always fun, and then came back to the center. And we had a focus group, and they said of all of the adult education centers that they had visited, ours was by far the best.
Is that national or statewide?
Statewide.
Okay.
Yes. Rotary has made a commitment to work on the basketball court across the street. We actually, Thornhill put up a new rim for them because someone took it down during COVID. So we took one of our old ones, put it up, so the kids could be out there doing their thing. It always has people on it, always, always, always. We also have Friendsgiving coming up. It's on November 2nd. It's free to everybody. It will be from 11:30 to 1:00, and it's in cooper, the Chamber and Thornhill put it on. We raise funds, money for the shelters, for the Sunshine Center, et cetera, et cetera. We get all donations from Chamber member restaurants, and then it is the biggest buffet you've ever seen. If you were there last year, it was amazing. So that is free to you as well. The other thing that might be happening on Saturday, I won't confirm or deny, but there might be a little get-together of some KSU students at Thornhill.
I think we got a little noticed today.
Yes, I did send, they are going to have, it's Martin Ingram, and he has guaranteed 15 security individuals that are all quote-unquote, I don't know how you get licensed. And we told them the time parameters, et cetera, et cetera. We've told them, you know, you can't be out in the front where all the houses are. You need to be in the back. He has assured me, and I did send an email today to Laura and Chief Bowman, letting them know. And I did tell Martin Ingram that the police will be coming by, and he was glad for that. We do still, we have the Capital City Steppers that come in daily and do some sort of dance. I mean, they come in twice a week, I'm sorry. The glitter bugs also come in and dance. And we just started a Parkinson's exercise program, and they come in twice a week. We were a cooling center, that is true, and we probably would absolutely be a warming center as, as well. Questions? Oh, wait.
I just want to say you're never allowed to leave. I love all that's going on. It's always so great to hear. And I had a really good time meeting some of the ladies that work for you at the Pride Festival.
Yeah, that was, that was fantastic.
Yeah, thank you for being here.
So how many graduates from the GED program have you had quarterly or yearly or?
So thus far, we have twelve. Which is pretty standard for what time of year it is. We always see a very big jump right in August when the kids go back to school because the parents are, you know, going crazy because they've been with them all summer. But we're, we're on track. We've met our performance goals every year for the last three years. And a performance is tied into some additional funding. We do receive a grant for literacy from the United Way, two grants from Dollar General, Buffalo Trace supports us. And then we all know that our annual fundraiser was a huge success, Bellapalooza, which raised twelve thousand dollars. And this allows us to help our students with whatever they need. We also are involved with, you know, Frank, Franklin County, Frankfurt Innovation Center, Rotary, Optimist, Kiwanis. I'm a member of, what else? I think that's all I know.
Kelly, I also just want to thank you and just let the Board of Commissioners know that Kelly brought to us, working with the Kentucky Give a Second Chance, getting some upskilling, that we can hire folks who might need a little training, either at Thornhill or through the Kentucky Career Center, so that the city can hire them.
And we are working with Reverend Whitlock as well for them to have interns come. And the Kentucky Career Center is located right in the building. We allow them to be in there free of charge because I think any, anything that's going on that's going to help, we want, we want them to, to succeed. We do get Panera Bread. Brought it over once. Every Monday, we donate that to anyone in the community that has some food insecurity. I tend to get, I have a buddy that works at Jif. He gives me a bunch of peanut butter. And we tend to give that out too if someone's in need of some food. And then we also donate it to Camp Brown Bear when they have their retreats. And we have, we did Camp Brown Bear's, two retreats ago, we provided them with transportation to take the women to equestrian therapy. So we're trying to get involved and we're trying to do everything. The, that one of the individuals from the federal government said, you know, the headline for today was Thornhill Saves the World. And I, I just hope it's just Franklin County and Frankfurt because I, I really can't really do much more. So if you hear some noise from top of the hill, you know that it's homecoming.
There you go.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
And last up, I'd like to welcome Marchelle Jenkins back from Meals on Wheels, the Franklin County Senior Activity Center. Thank you, Marchelle, for coming.
Thank you. Thank you guys for having me. And I just want to say thank you for your continued support and the recent gift that we received. It's very much appreciated. As you know, our name changed in December. Our nutrition program changed to Meals on Wheels Greater Frankfurt in name only. And, you know, there's power in a name and power in a brand. And so this has opened the door. I think everybody probably called it Meals on Wheels in the past, but it really wasn't Meals on Wheels. It's the Older Americans Nutrition Program. And when you tell people that, they just look at you like you have ten heads, like, what? In fact, I'm going to try to do this really fast. I know I have five minutes. When I went up to the, the state to file the DBA, the lady walked out and she said, I am so fun, I'm so happy that we finally have a meals program here in Frankfurt. I said, okay, I'm glad. She never knew. I said, we've had one since like nineteen sixty-seven. Had no idea. That just shows you how it resonated. So that's positive because now it's opened the door for us to do more fundraising on a national level. And speaking of fundraising, we do a lot of fundraising. We do a lot of grant writing. During the pan, during the pandemic, we brought in over two hundred thousand dollars worth of grants. So we are always, I'm always seeking, looking for that next, next thing. And so anyway, just let you know that. We opened up to the public after the pandemic and construction, August first. I gave, everybody, I think in your packet has the newsletter. So that's going to kind of show you all the many activities that we have started back. And it's going very well. Everybody loves the new look. If you haven't been out, I'll invite you to come out, take a look at it. It's very nice. It gives, it's more, it's, it's a more safe space. There's only one entrance in, multiple exits out, before people could come in from anywhere. And during, there's been multiple times that somebody would come in that really probably shouldn't have been there. So now we have one entrance in. It's, it's good. We have re, totally redesigned our food. So you're not, how you get your meals. It's now restaurant style. So it's more hygiene friendly, I believe. The pandemic really gave me an opportunity to look at all the areas that were of a touchable surface. And I was like, oh, we need to change some things. So we did, and it's been very well received. I had our CFO to compare where we were last year to where we are this year. Our nutrition program is running at about twenty-five percent increase. That has to do with food cost. As you know, King's Daughter's Apartments no longer has a kitchen. A lot of people from King's Daughter's Apartments are now qualified for Meals on Wheels. We kind of thought, once we opened up, some of those folks that were getting delivered meals would become back, come back into the congregate setting. Well, we have new people in the congregate setting, but our Meals on Wheels continue to increase. So we have not been able to decrease our meal routes. We had five meal routes pre-pandemic. We had to increase to nine meal routes. We still operate nine meal routes. We're serving about two hundred and fifteen meals a day. I know there's some new folks, new commissioners. Just to let you know, in the Bluegrass region, we are the only senior center that operates a commercial kitchen. So that means they are getting a home-cooked nutritional meal. We're monitored very strictly by our own dietitian. Bluegrass Community Action has, monitors us. Bluegrass Ad monitors us, and the state dietitian monitors us. So it's very stringent, but they are getting their nutritional needs met. Let you know, we do not operate a waiting list. Bluegrass area has multiple centers that have seventy, eighty-plus people waiting on a meal. There's a few of you that have gone on Meals on Wheels routes. And I hope that you left being a little bit more humble and it tugged on your heartstrings a little bit because it's more than just taking a meal. It's that visit, you know, hi, how are you doing? They look so forward to seeing a smiling face, but it's also that well check. And believe me, we've had every kind of situation you can even imagine. So that's something else that we're providing. I don't know if you realize that Franklin County and Frankfurt, Franklin County, your population of people that are fifty and older is over thirty-three percent. Just think about that. Ten thousand people are turning sixty every day. And that is not expected to cap until twenty fifty. So I will do my very best to never have a waiting list. Because I hear the stories of people that have been waiting on a waiting list and they die waiting on a meal. And I think that is totally unacceptable. We should never, ever, ever let that happen. It might be your grandmother, your mom and dad. And one day, it's going to be you. So I ask that whenever you consider and you look at our funding request, you keep that in your mind. We're not like another nonprofit. The Older Americans Act requires that Franklin County have a senior center. If we were not providing this, the city and county would have to. So this year, we did ask for more because we knew we were going to have an increase. That is just a drop in the bucket than if you had to do it along with the county. Franklin County supports us very, very well. They love their senior center. And guess what? It's your all senior center too. And I thank you, I thank you for the many visits you've done, for your continued support. One tidbit, we are in a pilot program with UK, Sanders Brown Aging, Center of Aging, to be the first senior center in the state to offer telehealth. So we are going to be looking for some funding to staff that. Let's see, what else? Oh, and we're going to be a voting, a voting precinct. Are we a precinct? I guess that's what we are.
Voting location.
Location. Thank you. Which is new. We never have in the, in the past. So thank you, guys. I could, believe me, I could talk for a very long time. But I just invite you, come, come, check us out. You've never done this. It doesn't have to be a special occasion. We'd love to see you anytime. And I just got to give kudos to my staff and the many volunteers that work day in and day out. We are constantly serving. We're giving a hundred-plus boxes of food out every week and a hundred food commodity boxes out a month. So we're working. We're working hard. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for what you do and all of your staff. I mean, it's, it, it really is great what you do for our community. And I know before COVID, I was over there quite a bit doing that.
Yes, you are.
I feel like some of those people became family.
And your kids.
And my kids.
That's right.
It's good just to get to know that particular group of residents in our community. And they just want a conversation sometimes and just know that someone cares about them. And I enjoyed even doing the Wheels on Meals when you needed someone ASAP. I helped out a lot.
That's right.
And it, it's just a lot of fun going into those homes and just seeing them. And some people really are waiting on that one meal. And
And it could be, a lot of times, it's the only meal.
Yes. So I just appreciate all that you've done and, you know, and it is rewarding. So if you ever have time or a couple of hours a week, it, it is really rewarding to see them. And now I see them in Kroger and different places. And now I know a lot more people. But it, I appreciate what you guys do over there and everyone that volunteers. It was, it's amazing. So thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Kathy Fields and representatives for our employee benefits program. I just want to thank Kathy, working hard and with our consultants to find cost savings for the city, which is really important. Her initiative, just to the changes, to the pension, and have saved the city thousands and thousands of dollars. And you're working hard to try to avoid costs in the future. So I just want to say thank you and our benefits plan. So take it away.
I'm actually really happy to introduce Wayne Willis, the Executive Vice President of Assured Partners. I don't think you all have enough opportunity to meet him. But Assured Partners is our insurance broker for employee benefits. And so they help us with competitive pricing. They help us with strategic planning. They help us with compliance. And so Wayne's going to kind of highlight what some of their work has been done to prepare us for 2023 as they've looked at how to position us to be continuing to offer rich benefits to our employees with minimal disruption and also look after the city's bottom line.
It's great to meet everybody. Good evening. I think everybody's already been sent this information. So I'm going to skip through some of it. I don't think we need to highlight exactly what Jed and I do and what the account team does. We are a full-service consultant. We worked with the City of Frankfurt half three years. And our job at the end of the day is to figure out what makes the most sense financially for the city to attract and retain employees and, and keep costs as low as we can. So first item of note, and this is just in there to highlight the last seven years. So since two thousand and sixteen, we've been able to maintain costs under industry average, national average. Healthcare has seen about an eight to ten percent change on an annual basis due to what's called medical trend or medical inflation. The city has done a great job, fantastic job, actually, with the exception of one year, fiscal year twenty-two, where it did exceed budget. There's been no change in employee contributions over the same amount of time. And when we sat down and did some mid-year planning with Kathy, we thought about what the opportunities would exist, where we needed to go to market. Did we want to blanket the market and see what else existed out there? Because it's a self-funded plan. So at the end of the day, the city's paying the claims. And we want to put you in the best position financially in order to continue to do that and offer the benefits. And so what ended up happening, so I'll just highlight kind of the, we're 2023. So this, you guys are on a fiscal year for budgeting, but your plan is actually on a calendar year. And so Anthem, the current carrier, proposed an anticipated fifteen percent increase to overall cost for the city. Now, this is before any employee contributions towards premiums. This is just sheer volume of claims and fixed costs. And that equated to about a four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollar annual increase. That's keeping the benefits the same, making no structural change contractually. We went to market. The only competitive option between the other two was Humana. Humana has a cost-neutral option on the table for you. There'll be no change in benefits. You'll get a ten thousand dollar administrative credit that'll help offset the change, ordering ID cards, making sure that everything gets set up correctly and the feeds are established. UMR is a TPA, third-party administrator that United Healthcare owns. And United could not get anyone to get competitive on the stop-loss component, which is the, the piece that's embedded within the plan to prevent any kind of financial hardship on the plan itself. So Humana was the, the best option. Delta Dental, you know, the thing about dental insurance is this, especially when you have a good plan, it's good and bad, right? The good news is you have a good dental plan. The bad news is you have a good dental plan. And so your employees are utilizing it. And so claims are running a little hot for the group. Delta Dental is proposing a three and a half percent increase. That equates to right at fifty, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars. No change in benefit structure. And then we took those rates with performance, went to the market, and no one else could compete with the current rates you're paying. So you're in a good position there. Vision, Anthem is holding the rates current. They're not going to change anything. However, ultimately, it, it's going to make more sense for the city to move the medical plan, I think, to Humana for the savings potential. And so we didn't want to leave one stray line of coverage floating there with Anthem. So Delta Dental, which markets vision insurance through a national provider called VSP, and they, they will sell that and actually provide one ID card. So employees will get one ID card. One side will have Dental, the other side will have Vision. It's just more for simplicity. Does offer a broader retail network and for eye exams, it'll be a ten-dollar copay versus a twenty-dollar copay. So it's a little bit better for the employees there. And then Guardian and Standard both declined to quote. Dental insurance is, is really, really small in terms of cost. The single rate is only five dollars and thirteen cents. So it's just hard to get competitive with other carriers. On the life insurance, this is where there's some bigger numbers and some more savings. So One America was going to hold the current rates, but we need to market check this every periodically. Even though you're in a rate hold, that doesn't mean you have the best rates available. mean you have the best rates available. At the end of the day, life insurance is a small pennies on the thousand price. And Standard came in 26% under current. That's making no changes to the benefits. That'll result in $17,600 annually in savings. And that's making no changes to the benefit itself. What we'll do is we'll have all the employees transition to the new coverage. They'll just re-up and re-verify and reconfirm their beneficiaries, which is something that needs to be done on a regular basis anyway. We couldn't get anybody else competitive compared to what Standards. So we went out to market and we sent competitive debt at all the other carriers, but Standards' quote blew everybody out of the water. And so on the voluntary life, they're going to match current rates, but they're going to increase the guarantee issue to $250,000 from $180,000. And why that's important is when you make a life insurance change, a voluntary life insurance change, every single employee is given the opportunity to do what's called a true open enrollment, meaning they can purchase life insurance up to that, that guarantee issue amount without having to provide any medical questions. And so they'll be able to get up to $250,000 now versus $180. And the rates stay exactly the same, just depending on what age band they're in. Retiree life, you've got this in place. One America wanted to hit you with a 32% increase. That's about $8,900 annually. Standard came in 53% under current. So it's $14,500 in savings, again, making no changes there on the benefits. Disability insurance, these are all voluntary. So voluntary, short-term, voluntary, long-term. So this is only going to be savings that's realized by the employees themselves. But you can see that the Standard came in two and a half percent under current for all age groups on the voluntary, short-term disability. And then on the voluntary, long-term, they're 13% under. So again, this is going to just save the employees additional dollars. And these are their funds. We wanted to look at, after talking to Kathy and realizing that there probably needed to be some improvement on the employee assistance program, make it a broader, more inclusive program with better benefits. We looked at two standalone EAP programs that exist here in Kentucky that we deal with a lot. One is called the Wayne Corporation. The other is Cure Link. And Standard also came in and said that they could upgrade their EAP program. But at the end of the day, a standalone EAP, they've become increasingly popular. They've been around for years. But after COVID and some of this, the general acceptance, more of mental health discussions, employee assistance programs have become increasingly popular and more utilization has gone through the roof. So not just here, but with all groups. So what I did here, this is at the top. Is it okay to walk away from this? So these are the employee contributions today for the free plans, the Buy Up Core and HSA plan. And what that results in, in collective premium for the city is $236,000, based on current enrollment, right? So enrollment could fluctuate if you have some additions or some tractions. If, we just modeled a couple of options for you. Because the Humana option will be cost neutral to the city, you don't have to do anything with these employee contributions. You could leave them exactly the same if you want. Nothing's changed on these since 2018. But if you wanted to see what changing it by five percent just to employee contributions or 10%, we modeled two different options. And you can see what the price differential would be and what the net result would be in increased savings to the city. So adding a 10% increase, an approximate, because I left them with whole amounts, we rounded up, would, would increase contributions by $24,000 if you went to a $10,000 or 10% increase to employee contributions. But it doesn't change it much. You can do whatever you want. You have the flexibility anywhere in between there to do anything you want. But this is just a couple of options that we wanted to give you. Any questions on that?
So the top one's the one we're doing right now.
Yeah.
Annual employee contributions. So how much are we contributing on that?
The other $2.6 million.
So essentially going from current to option two, we're increasing, now looking at the HSA family, $40 to $45. And that would save the city $24,000 approximately.
Assuming enrollment stayed exactly the same, there's a lot of assumptions you have to make there, that enrollment stays exactly the same in, in all three plans. We can model greater increases to this too. This was just a starting point because they haven't been changed in so long and you've had such a good message to give out to the employees. If you wanted to just start small, this would give you two. But we've modeled increases for employee contributions, anywhere from 0% to 20% for clients, 30%. Just depends on what you want to do, what you kind of accomplish. Was there another question?
Yeah, it actually goes back a little bit. So Humana is offering a better deal at this point than Anthem. Can you go back to Anthem and say, we're going to leave if you don't match Humana's?
Yeah, we already have. So from a fixed cost perspective, at the end of the day, when you're self-funded, there's only really two components you can control. It's the monthly admin charge and then your stop-loss coverage. The claims are going to happen organically. They're, they're occurring, a claim just happened just now, there'll be another one that happens in an hour. So what you want to do is put yourself in the best position from a negotiation standpoint with contracts. But that's net cost back to the city because you're paying the claims. But we wanted to try to control fixed costs. What Anthem came back and said was that there is an impending large claim coming in the group and they were going to put what's called a laser on that potentially. We don't know for sure if that'll happen. But what that means is they literally will carve that person out and you'll have a higher limit on them. So Humana is not going to do that. Their rates are firm, but there's potential that Anthem is going to take another look at claims. But at the end of this week, they'll be out for September. And it's a possibility that they'll attach a laser on it. Not only that, they were also higher. So it's, it could be even more exposure by the end of the week, just depending on timing with these claims.
Sure.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
So one of the things that's become increasingly a problem for a lot of groups is prescription utilization. There's a number of drugs that have come off patent. The manufacturers have redesigned the drugs, renamed the drugs. You're seeing all the commercials every single time you turn on the TV. This particular program is a voluntary program that the city can enter into. Doesn't cost the city anything to roll this out. You'll have to get employees to take advantage of it. The financial incentive to the employees that the drugs will be shipped to them, to their home at no cost to them. The city will then turn, pay these, put the cost of these medications. And it's not every medication. This is going to be your high-cost specialty meds. And I put an example on there that's a real example for the city of Frankfurt. Testidera is a drug for multiple sclerosis. And right now, the city is paying on average, a little over $8,100 every time that drug gets prescribed and dispensed to that member. Under this program, that drug will cost $4,500. Same exact drug. City will get billed for it, but the savings is there. And it just comes back to the bottom line. We'll update the drug list. The communication pieces that would go out during open enrollment will actually be customized to directly affect the top 10 drugs that are available under the program that members could take advantage of. And then we'll update that as drugs come off the list and on the list. But worst-case scenario, you save all that money. Best-case scenario, you save that money. So it's, but again, voluntary, we're not making any changes to the benefits. There's no contractual change. The employee sees no difference other than they get it mailed to their house. So encapsulating all of that, the recommendations based on what we've seen and market check would be to move the medical to Humana. Remains cost neutral from a gross cost perspective. Ultimately, net cost will be determined by what you want to charge the employees for contributions. That's going to save roughly $478,000. The life, voluntary life and disability insurances to move to Standard, that'll save the city $25,000. On the employee assistance program, Kathy sat in and did some demos on both the Wayne Corp. and Cure Link and feels confident that Cure Link is a better option for the employees. Dental is to stay right where it's at with Delta Dental. Vision moved to Delta Dental. It'll be VSP's network. Delta Dental will have one bill, one ID card for simplicity. Termination date change is to change to date of versus end of the month. This will ensure that you don't have somebody who gets terminated or severs employment on October 15th and has claims before the end of the month that you're now paying for. So it pays, you would pay for any claims that are incurred prior to their termination date versus them potentially going out and then running up other claims. That's what that's for. Retiree life coverage, we're just recommending that you cease coverage at age 90. I think you've got one employee who would be over that. We just have that person grandfathered in, but then just scale that back to 90. And then HRA recommendation is the more commonly used approach of terminating accounts upon the end of employment. An HRA, you don't want to leave lingering claims out there and let the employer run up potential more additional claims that the city will pay for. So you just terminate it. Same, it would match the termination date for coverage. And that's it? Any questions? No, that's a lot. And you've been in here and you've had a lot thrown at you, but this is, this is what I live for. So, I know it's boring.
Yeah, I think it was your first or second slide that you had. It showed the increasing that we have increased in 2022. It was well above that, I think it was a green or a blue line right here.
Yeah.
And so with that increasing, we can definitely see the effects of maybe COVID and other things that are for the reason of COVID from 2019 until 2020, there's a gradual increase consistently that we're now over that green line. Do you foresee now that in 22 that that will continue up another notch due to so many appointments being canceled during COVID that is now a line for other things? You know, some people are finding out that they have cancer because they've missed their appointment since 2019 and now it's more aggressive. And there's other chronic illnesses that they've now caught. So will you, do you think, looking at the trajectory right now, that that will continue to be on the upper side of that green line?
I don't think so. What I'll say about COVID is this, so it certainly had a large effect on, on the country. We know that. Everybody agrees with that. What it, what I think the carriers try to do, and this is Humana, Anthem, United Healthcare, is that they, they put a lot of weighted value on the fact that a lot of procedures were delayed in 2020 and pushed back to the back half of 2020 or into 2021. And this is a trickle-down effect of all of that. And there may be some components to that. The reality is that the average cost of treatment for COVID in the state of Kentucky was less than $1,000, was the average, right? And you're going to have anomalies. You're going to have large claimants that are out there and that's the reason they're anomalies. I, you know, looking at your all's claims, I don't think that you're going to see that. You may see different diagnosis. You know, you've got some large claimants in there. You've got some chronic conditions in there. And they're not going anywhere. At the end of the day, whether that claim is a $200,000 claim or a $500,000 claim or a $1 million claim, God forbid, right? At the end of the day, we have layered it and insulated the group so that they've got no exposure beyond $100,000. So while it may look bad, the net result is you would get reimbursed for anything that goes over and above that stop-loss limit. So that's the reason why we structured it that way. And we also have aggregate coverage built into it, which is like a worst-case scenario or what we would commonly refer to as like sleep easy insurance. So you don't have to worry about it bankrupt in the city. So you can have a terrible year if you want to, but we know what the finite cap is. Now, we don't wish that on anybody, certainly, right? Because everything that happens below the budget line is money that comes back to the city. But I just think there's been a perfect storm of things related to COVID claims. And it has affected a lot of groups. And it has, to your point, caused some people who failed to diagnose, right? They just didn't go in.
Right.
And things got worse as they went along. But it hasn't, it hasn't been as bad as I think it was first feared.
So we may be leveling off as far as, not so much just COVID, but just the effects of the chronic.
The trickle-down effect of what that occurred. Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
When you can go back to slide, show them the impact of our stop-loss coverage where it's just.
Well, like for example, in 2021, you had nearly a billion dollars reimbursed under the stop-loss contract.
This is this column right here. So see, some years.
We didn't have any.
We were paying for that insurance, but we weren't really being reimbursed. But here's where it's really paid off occasionally. Those are costs that would have hit the city, but they didn't.
And what we're trying to do, again, gets back to what you can control, which is the stop-loss premiums that a carrier is charging you, plus administrative charges on your claims. And so those are the two things we can control. Humana, we did a disruption analysis on Humana's network, because I'm sure that that question will come up. Somebody will say, is Humana's network as strong as Anthem's? Can I stand here and say 100%? I can't. But it is 98.7% the same. There's always going to be some disruption. And I can't sit here and say that there's not a group of physicians somewhere in the state of Kentucky that's going to enter into some type of contract negotiation with Humana and come out of their network. But I can't say the same thing about Anthem either. Right? There's always contract negotiations going on. And they threaten publicly and that becomes a contest for PR to get the movement that they will afford. So I don't think you'll have any issues. State of Kentucky used Humana's network for nine years. They're a well-known network and you're not going to have any problems.
So what is our stop-loss? Did you say that, is it $2 million?
Hundred, it's $100,000 per claim.
Got it. So it's not cumulative stop-loss.
Well, there's also the aggregate though.
Yeah, the aggregate will pay up to a million dollars over worst-case scenario. The way aggregate coverage works, so self-funded claims, which I think the easiest way to explain this. So there's expected and there's maximum. Forget the fixed cost component of it. So if they just project claims and let's say the projection was $2 million just in medical claims, medical and RX claims, you would, aggregate coverage is that sleep easy, worst-case scenario insurance, and it's a 25% window on top of those medical claims. So that's the worst-case scenario. And that's built in there. You're paying for that too. But that's nonexistent as far as premium goes in the grand scheme of things, a very small piece.
Yes.
What's our, actually, what's the cost for, that the city pays for the stop-loss coverage? Do we pay something extra?
You do, right? I don't have that number in here, but I can get it to you, yeah.
Just curious.
Yeah, upon another page.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you so very much.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we'd like to call up Alicia Boyd and Courtney Fallis. Want to thank them. They've been working together to make budget information more accessible and transparent to citizens. And this is, again, another one of our priorities under our strategic plan and a tremendous improvement from what was released before, which was a grainy PDF and that was hard to read.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, back to what the gentleman was talking about just a second ago with Kathy. We also have a restricted investment account with West Banko that's, we got that and one with worker, that's workers' comp as well. I can't remember. One's 2.8 and the other's 2.2 million. So that, that kind of eases some of the worry about that as well, so. Okay, so I'm not going to take a bit of credit for any of this. This was all Courtney. So thank you, Courtney, so much. She took a vision that Laura and I had and ran with it. So we were trying to make our budget information more user-friendly. That's all this is. This is, this is just the budget information that you guys all got back in June when you did the, you know, readings one and two and the budget ordinance and all the various things that we provided you all. So what we did was we broke it down by, that's the first section's introduction. That's the page that city manager had provided you guys when we provided the budget information to you. So that's the very first thing that pops up when the user goes to the website. So, and on either side of that, you'll see summary of governmental funds, which would be general fund and all the other governmental funds. That's not the sewer fund. So it's just the same information you were provided, those summaries that I gave you. And then also the, go to the other one, summary sewer fund. So that's just a summary of sewer fund information. And then in the middle of that introductory section is the budget ordinance itself. The signed budget ordinance that was adopted, I think maybe the 27th or 29th. I can't really see that date. So that's just a copy of the budget ordinance itself. So the very first tab beyond that is general fund revenue. And as you can see, it's basically the spreadsheets that everyone got. So the, the community will be able to go out there and see what we budgeted for in all of those various revenues.
If there's ever any issue with not being able to see it, you can open it in a new window so that you can zoom in better on each of those spreadsheets.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No.
I just wanted people to know that.
No, I just wanted people to know that. If they want to get down into it, they can. Yeah. So that's the revenue. Moving along, city commission. She's put great links in for each of the various department budgets. So you'll be able to go to whatever department budget you might want to look at. So here's city manager. So under admini- administration, obviously, we've got IT, my group.
Alicia, Courtney, also might want to click on where it also says links or detail. Because that also, where there is more detail under each account, you can actually see it. I just want to acknowledge that, you know, I know Commissioner Waldridge also wanted some sort of like dashboard. And this is probably not exactly the dashboard, but we're getting there. This is our first step of.
I was just impressed with the first step. When you guys shared it with me that we were moving forward. So I was glad we're moving in the right direction.
Well, good. So just very quickly, go back to city manager. And this is what Laura's referring to. So you see the, see that second tab? That's a list that provides the user with what we plan to do within some various categories of expenses that might not be readily, you know, transparent as far as like, say, professional fees or things of that nature. Maybe where we might be traveling, if we've got travel costs, that type of thing. And you will find those lists in every department's budget. So, and I won't bore you with a lot of the other stuff. Public safety, as you can see, it's the five different departments. We've got our public works departments. I think we have seven of those. Parks and Recs included. Planning only has obviously the one budget. So you'll see that. And then now under sewer, we've got the revenue categories. So if you click on revenue, that's what sewer is expected to get in revenue, obviously. And it's by funds 200 and 300, which are O and M and capital. And then under expenses, same thing, you'll see Fund 200, which is O and M. And then the next one should be Fund 300. And same thing with sewer. Click to that next tab, list of anything that is broken down into further detail. And then the very last thing I want to show you is back up at the top. Under, I can't, I cannot see. I'm sorry. Capital improvements. Courtney provided a picture of the Dolly, New Dollygram playground, which is obviously a capital improvement. So that's what you approved this year. It's broken down by the various things that were in the budget. And then under, what does that say? All other funds? I cannot say that. So all other funds is obviously all the other funds. It'll be Fort Hill, municipal aid, additional capital improvements funds, the forfeiture funds that the police department uses, stormwater, the Tiger Grant that will also encompass the raised, the raised grant as, as well. So as you can see, as you go across, that's all the other funds. And all of those tie back to the budget ordinance that was on the introductory page as well. So, but yes, thank you to Courtney. And this is obviously a fluid website. And as we progress and move along, we hope to provide even more information, maybe more descriptions. We've talked about that. But for now, I wanted to get this out there for the public to have our budget. And then if someone calls in and needs a copy of something, I can say, hey, you go out to the website. You'll be able to see it out there. So anyways, does anybody have any questions? If you have any recommendations, email those to us and we'll try to incorporate them. But for now, I so want to thank Courtney. She did a great job.
I think you guys did an excellent job. We're moving in the right direction. I do have one question. So will this be a one, will this be the current budget only? And once this budget, we go into another one, will there be a place where we can then bring up, since this is new, what I can say, oh, I want to go back and bring up last year's budget that we started with and then this year's budget?
So Courtney, if you'll go back to city commission, since we pulled up city manager, I'll show you. So go to city manager.
To answer your question, it's already there. So we have full year actual 2021, final budget 2022, and then fiscal year 23 departmental, departmental budget. So it's, there's already a comparison. So as we move along.
You'll just add to that.
It will grow. It will not necessarily grow. 2020 will probably fall off. 2021 will stay. 2022's actual will be there. You have budget for 23 and budget for 24. So you'll continually see those comparisons.
Roughly three years will be present on there. Okay, I like that.
But the site is built. Like we could keep this version and just use this template to build the next year. So that way this is historical data. You can go back and look at it.
Because sometimes you like that, especially with us as commissioners. You know, we are in a situation where we could change every two years. And it allows, and I think I spoke with city manager regarding some of this as well, not just for the residents, but for new commissioners that come in every two years. It helps us instead of bombarding you guys with questions, or city manager or someone else with questions, that we can do our own research to go back to see what those things were, you know, just previously, a couple of years back. And so to me, I think that helps for us to be stronger leaders when we come in and, and be able to reach that information. So.
Absolutely, yeah.
We wanted to make it as easy as possible. So you can search the tab. You can look at department specifically. It's in three different locations on the city website. So multiple people can reach it. The people that are subscribed on our website also got a notification today and the news alerts.
That's awesome. I know Shermae is excited. She's like, go to the website. But no, I love it. I look forward to so much more. I know my push has been, since I've been on commission, is getting more things out there so more community can see it, obtain it whenever they want. And it's helped, it helps with us, like she said, archiving certain things and for us to see it. So I, I look forward to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job, ladies.
And now we'd like to welcome back Katie Beard and talk a little bit more about solid waste. And also just want to give a big thanks to Katie and Byron Roberts, our superintendent, and Sarah Anderson's working on solid waste, our solid waste management, restoration of proposed fees. And I'm glad everybody was able to get out and visit with you all on Rouse Avenue and learn a little bit more. And she's got a short little presentation to give you a little background and background to the community about why this is important and important to pay for.
Thank you. So like Laura said, we're restoring a waste management fee. We're proposing to restore a waste management fee. This is something that we have had in the past at different levels. And so we'll talk about that. But I just want to give a brief kind of timeline on solid waste management and the regulations that we deal with, the environmental impacts of, with what we do every day. So in 1934, they banned dumping in the ocean. That was very common practice. It's hard to imagine now, but you know, cities like New York who are on the ocean dumped 100% of their waste in the mid, until the mid 90s. So that's really something that's tough to.
There was that march that people went out and protested to the dump.
Yeah. So it's just, it is really hard to imagine that now, but that's where we were, not that long ago. In 1945, the backyard or illegal dumping and backyard burning was prohibited. 1963, the Clean Air Act was passed and that had impacts for solid waste as well. This picture is just the methane gases. You can visibly see escaping from that, from that dump site. And then in 1965, the Solid Waste Disposal Act was passed. The goal was to reduce waste and protect human and environmental health. And in 1972, the, the, let's see, sorry, I'm reading my notes and trying to look at this at the same time. Clean water. That last picture, you can see the river is literally on fire as a result of some of the hazardous waste that were dumped and floating to the surface there. So the 70s really kicked off, I think, a lot of environmental regulations. In 76, the Resource Conservation and Recovery Act created a plan for recycling, conservation, and waste management. And they discontinued the use of unsafe landfills. In the early 2000s is when pay as you throw became popular. And that's when we really started to see an uptick in recycling. Another kind of background slide here, the cost of owning and operating a landfill. So as a result of all these regulations, we had to be more responsible and take care of our waste in an appropriate manner. So as you can see there, it's, it's quite expensive to begin to operate and maintain a landfill. On average, in the country, it's about 50, $54 a ton for disposal. And in Frankfurt, we pay 35 currently, with a schedule to increase over the next five years. Currently, this is our solid waste division. We have free services that we offer to 10,000 customers. Our budget is just roughly around 2 million annually. And a good chunk of that, as you can see, is personnel-related expenses. 918,000, about 350,000 for one garbage truck each year. And then the remainder is our operating expenses, landfill, landfill disposal fees, et cetera. And the staff that we have to provide these services is currently a superintendent, an assistant superintendent, code enforcement, and 13 technicians. We do rely heavily on our inmates. And that program really saves us a lot of money. If we hired eight additional technicians to keep us going, it would cost roughly $450,000. And our inmate program costs us roughly about 65,000.
And Katie, didn't you mention once when we were talking that at one time in 2013 or 12, we were up to about 20 staff members? And this was part of cost reductions where we have reduced the number of staff, had cost savings now and because of the inmate, using inmates?
Yes. The reason we were able to reduce staffing is kind of twofold. One is the inmates and one is the use of automatic side loaders because they operate with one staff rather than two or three. So over the years, like you mentioned, 2012, we were at 22. And we've kind of cut back that to 16 today. So the department as a whole and the division has been making an effort towards being efficient, using our staff in the best way that we can, most efficient way that we can. So we, we're always looking for those savings. And of course, now with the budget shortfall, the shortfall in revenues, we're looking at more ways to, to bridge that gap. Historically, here's kind of a look at our services that we've provided. Our garbage pickup, prior to pay as you throw, we actually did have a standard $5 a month charge. In 2012, we enacted pay as you throw to encourage more recycling. And your cost was based on the size of your trash cart. And then in 2017, we abandoned that program and we actually just went to a free service. Recycling, we began that in the 90s with tubs provided to the customers. This, the sorting was actually done in-house by our staff at the recycle center at Rouse. In 2009, we moved to a single stream where you could put everything together in a, in a cart. And then in 2012, the, sorry, the carts were enact, were enacted in 2012. In 2009, we did the curb side. Free weeks, we began that at two per year. And in 2012, with pay as you throw, we increased that to six. And then the yard waste, we used to run a chipper truck through the neighborhoods to pick up the yard waste. So it was just the bigger things that we would pick up at that time. In 2012, we began curb side, I'm sorry, 2004, we began curb side pickup where you can put it in long waste bags or in your regular trash carts. Or you can stack it neatly if it's the larger branches. And we'll pick that up and take it out to the carpenter farm. So that's kind of a brief history of each of the services that we have offered over the years. Currently, we serve about 10,400 residential customers plus a few business customers in the Renaissance District for recycling only. We do three cleanups per year, as we just amended last month. We offer the electronic scrap, household hazardous waste, and recycle drop off at several locations, including Rouse Avenue. Of course, we have additional paid services for bulk pickups and overflow bags so that people have additional options to get rid of their waste. So a big part of this study in determining what we wanted to do, what we wanted to propose as a fee, we looked at a lot of the other communities around the state and what do they do? So we've got this interactive map that's kind of nice. I think some of you all have seen it and, and maybe had the opportunity to click on some of those and look. But I'm just going to summarize a few. From the research that we did and, and found in all the surrounding communities, Frankfurt and Franklin County is the only one that, that offers free service. And it's hard to see on this map, if I can, yeah. I'll run through just a few of the highlights. I won't click on every single one. But this is the city of Georgetown. Their service provider is Republic Services and their billing rate is at 1568.
Per month.
Per month, yes. There's a lot of other information here. They do one free item per week and additional items are $25. That's bulky items like chairs, mattresses. We pick up unlimited bulky items currently. Let's see. And they're kind of color coded by cost. Of course, the green represents Frankfurt and Franklin County, which is free. And then we've got an orange level and a red level, which is more expensive. The city of Versels is another neighbor of ours. Rumkey provides their service and it's 1395 a month. Let's see, Lawrenceburg, we had, I think, a blank there on their monthly cost. But we were able to compare some of our services. If I can read that there. It's a, they charge $75 for a bulky item. So that was kind of interesting. We, we put that one in there. Shelby County is another one. They have various server, service providers and the fee varies per company. So Shelbyville was kind of a strange one when we looked into that. It's like each neighborhood kind of set up their own trash pickup, which was interesting. They could contract with the company of their choice. So that was kind of interesting. But there's, oops, can't zoom. Zoom out. I'm zooming too close. But.
Maybe just highlight Winchester.
There's a lot of, Winchester is another one that's very nearby. And it's very eye-opening when you start looking at those costs. 3468 per month. So that was, I think that was the most expensive one that we found. Paducah, 1650. Mount Washington, 1787. Pikeville, $10. And Owensboro, 18. So.
Just one question. Out of all of those costs, is that recycling and garbage? Is it?
Yeah. And I didn't go through every single one, but some of them don't offer recycling at all. Such as Georgetown. There's no curb side recycling. And there's various levels of service, but very comparable really to what we do here. So that led us to make our recommendations. I think our, our goal would really be to cover our full $2 million budget. And to do that, it would be 1724 a month for our residential customers. So that's one option. There are really numerous options. Any number of different ways to break this down. But some of the ones we wanted to present is either just go for it and do the 1724 a month. A little bit easier option to kind of break us in and, and build up to that 1724 would be to start at $10 or to start at $5 and work your way up. If you start at $5, you're going to generate about $624,000. So that's about 30% of our budget. $10, 1.2 million or 58%, and $15 is 1.8 million. Of course, the 1724 gets us to 2 million.
I would think if we did that, in seven years from now, prices most likely won't go down. So we'd still be behind.
Yeah, we would definitely want to reevaluate after a period of three to five years at least to kind of see where we are, where our costs are and what's changed in the market. And what, you know, the price of things, like you say, is probably not going to go down, but continue to go up. Along with our proposal, we want to offer some modernization of our services. We want to give the option of paying online, ordering services online, which you can do now with Frank Waste. That's something we've been seeing more and more of that. That's something we've been seeing more and more of that. But just kind of make it easier for people to access our services and pay for their services. Some other equity considerations would be for fixed, people on a fixed income. Some of the things that we've seen is like in Versels, they offer a $2 discount. There's a very simple application that they fill out. And the first year, it would be $2 off per month and then they would kind of reduce that each year until that subsidy was eliminated. But that's something we could consider, something that we are still kind of ironing out those details. Some other things you could do is allow extra trash carts for a lower, a lower cost, such as one and a half or some percentage of the cost. And then also, when we roll this out, offer a one-time discount. We've done this before during COVID. We offered a discount on the upgrade fee. So you could get a larger cart for free for some time period, probably a couple of months. All right, so what do we do next? We have to tie down the billing issue. I think the easiest and most efficient way for us to do that is using a third party. We also, what's going to be really important is to get the message out to our customers, to let them know what to expect, what's coming, and what do they get with these services, what their fee is covering. So we've already started kind of planning that out and working with Blair and getting some ideas together for some public surveys to just kind of see, gauge the interest in different types of services and how they're going to feel about this. And another option would be to possibly expand our business services. And these are things that we need to think through and work out all of the details, but maybe offer that to our downtown customers where we're already in the area. And we could do that for them. Just to kind of wrap up, a couple of things about our services in general and in developing this fee. This is supportive of our sustainable strategy, our strategy for our overarching goals for our city. So that's environmentally, we're having a positive impact. We're meeting all the regulations as well as having a financial sustainability impact in helping us cover the cost of some of these services. And I think the presentation kind of pointed out too that this is normal and this is common for communities to charge a fee like this. And really, we're the exception right now in not charging a fee. But that's really all I've had for you. Trying to keep it brief because we've been here a while and I know all of you all have heard a lot about this and thought about, a lot about this already. So with that, I will just answer any questions you have.
I guess my question is, like you had said something about during this small period that we get upgrade for free to the larger cart. And I don't know with the feasibility of the small carts versus the larger trash cans, but if we're looking at providing, I guess, not having enough services to pick up so much trash, wouldn't it behoove us just to offer our community the large trash cans unless they were elderly or something of that and needed a smaller one for them to be able to do that? But wouldn't it behoove our community, our average resident, just to give everyone the large trash cans and get rid of the middle size? Therefore, it can hold more trash. Therefore, we're having less trash on the street and bags for pickup. If we just give everyone the largest size, I mean, I don't know if that's a one-time cost for people or what that looks like, but if we did the larger one, I would think that that would allow me to say, oh, I only have one trash can in. Well, I was wanting to get rid of these pillows or I was wanting to get rid of the stuff I had in the garage. I won't wait till waste week. I can just throw it in on top of the big one because it'll hold it and then therefore now our people aren't picking up as much.
Yeah.
So I guess that's one thought process that I had in doing all these small, medium, and large trash cans that maybe we should just go with one size for the whole community unless they've requested a small one because they are, like I said, maybe elderly or have issues in pulling a larger trash can. And I'd like to see, like, what does that look like and how does that help us? Being that, like you'd stated, you know, the side loader, you know, it picks up that one trash can. If we can put more in there, I think that that would behoove us to do that. I did like the idea of maybe getting two trash cans, but then that also may have a lot of trash cans. Then we're going to have issues with trash cans being everywhere. So I don't know about that. My other thing is how much would the third party cost us? And is that going to, is that going to cut into our savings that we're trying to gain? How much would that third party cost us? And then my other one would be the downtown businesses as well. When we're looking at downtown businesses versus, like, let's say a lawyer's office that may have two employees and more than likely, the lawyer's office would probably have more paper than anything, which could be recyclable. You know, could they not leave their rumpkey just because they're a business and come over to our services when technically it really is maybe more recycled than anything, two people per business? Can we start switching some of those businesses over that are literally just paper oriented or things of that nature that may be able to help us versus them being on another trash company, I guess?
Yeah.
That's sort of my, that's my thought, sorry.
Yeah.
And I'm not saying I need answers tonight.
Those are all doable.
Okay.
Just want to say I appreciate you tying all this back to our strategic plan. You know, is this sustainable for the city? No. And then also, you know, I was going to ask, you know, how can we adequately talk about this? And I think, I think that's something I'm going to be interested in us trying to do. If we, you know, vote and approve this. So just thank you for all your work, Sarah, Byron, everybody involved, city manager.
Thank you.
It was great to go out and meet last week too. So thank you.
Thank you.
So going back, I like the concept, I think maybe Selis Wilder brought up, of pay as you throw. So if you have more stuff, you pay more and maybe it helps you to rethink how much stuff you have. And I'm not sure how we could include that, but the act of composting at home, taking that out of the garbage would make sense from a couple of standpoints, sustainability and then also there's just less going to the landfill, which would be a savings for us. So I guess I didn't see any incentives there for reducing waste and I'm not sure how we could incorporate that, but that would be a plus.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense. I think we moved away from pay as you throw just because of how difficult it was to track and it would simplify the system to have a flat rate. But yeah, we can definitely look at ways to incentivize more recycling, less waste.
And then Patricia's comment about the whole fee structure and how to have people pay and if we have a third party doing that, does that increase their cost? I know what a lot of places seem to go, when I've called other cities, they have, you can pay by phone or pay online and some of those things, like automated payment, payments, which I know the plant board has worked hard at getting people to do it electronically because then you don't have the mailing component and the cost of that.
Yeah, I think that would be a good goal, is to get as many people as possible paying online. And I'll look into the cost. I spoke briefly to finance and they have a third party that they use for other business. So it may be a relatively low fee, but I will look into that and find out.
Just want to add to you all that we welcome your feedback. We're working on a timeline where Katie's presenting on solid waste this month. Next month, she's going to talk about stormwater and stormwater utility fee. We will schedule some engagement with the community, some community meetings so we can talk about this and the importance of being able to pay for these critical services. And, but wouldn't bring back something right away, we'd probably, we want to spend some time to engage with the community and then bring it back to you all.
And my other, I would add, I just want to add one more thing, but one other thing that we could look at is, I just don't, I hate to say it. I know that people pay their bills and I get that, but just another bill? And what is the enforcement of this bill, right? What is the enforcement? If they don't pay it, then they log on to pay or send it in. What is the enforcement and what does that look like? And then what are they held responsible for for not paying for their garbage pickup?
Yeah.
I just think, I don't know, I think we may want to think a little bit into that, that it should be tied into something else.
Well, if they don't pay for picking up, then we don't keep picking it up.
Exactly. And what does our community look like then?
Yeah, it's a, it's a tough problem.
You know, that's, that's what we need to think about moving forward. What does that look like? How many people that don't want to pay this or what is our enforcement on that side of it? Or late fees or whatever that implies of not paying your trash bill.
Right, yeah, I think in the past, they would come and pick up, take away your cart.
Okay.
I don't know specifically all the ramifications, like you say. They have to find, they have to do something with that garbage. So were they responsible and took it to a dumpster or to the landfill? I don't know.
Okay.
But that is, that's a hard problem that we have to think through.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Great. Going to welcome back Penny Peebler and also Jordan Miller to give us an update, second quarterly update on our strategic plan implementation.
Thank you so much for having me here. Your whole staff team is assembled here because this is our plan. It's the board's plan and the staff's plan. And it is really a pleasure to be here for the second quarter to update you on our progress on your plan. You have in your pockets a PowerPoint presentation, which we will go through, highlighting about 30 separate items on which we've been working over the last quarter. As you'll recall, when we came to you for the first report, we reported on about 22 different action items. Today, we'll be reporting on an additional 30 separate action items. So as you remember that we have four priorities, 21 strategies, and 85 separate actions that this long-term plan encompasses. The 11 by 17 sheet in your packet includes our red, yellow, and green status bars for items which are in progress, complete, or red being not yet started. And so as this is a long-term plan, this is to be expected, but what we want to do is be in action. What we want to do as a staff and board team is be in action toward all of the strategies and action items in this plan. So I want to just take you through this and allow time for questions. Yes, good. So again, four priorities, 21 strategies, 85 actions. These are our four priorities. They're also listed behind us on the wall and they've been posted throughout all city buildings. There's our planning, ongoing, and complete. And in some cases, a process may be an ongoing process, but the habitualization of the process is in the completed phase. So for instance, one of our action items was for the, all of the utilities to meet regularly. So while they'll never be completed with meeting, the process of systematizing and setting up that regular structure, that phase may be complete, so if that makes sense. So starting with our first, with our first area of focus, communicate a new narrative. The internal communications team met in September with all the departments to discuss how the city communications team can aid all departments in getting the word out about upcoming planned events as well as unexpected incidents such as road closures. The initial meeting was very productive and all departments have an assigned communication team member. We will meet as a group at least quarterly and members will reach out to Blair or Rebecca to initiate campaigns when necessary. The next ongoing team meeting will take place in December. The second action item is self-guided tours for tourists on their own devices. We've been very excited about this project. We've been working on it actually for a couple of years. Tourism has begun scripting an EH Taylor tour from Russ Kennedy and Russ Hatter's current walking tour. The IT department is working with tourism to put that into our GIS system. So many cities are using their existing global information systems tracking in order to put, to put tour information out there. That makes it really easy for residents. You don't have to pay for a guide by cell or you can just get it from the map directly on your phone. The museum has all of the photographs that we need and Ellie and Robin are working with us to create scripts for additional tours. The city staff visited Bardstown to take an exploration of their history and bourbon tour. That was very effective and I'm pleased to say that we're also working on some story mapping right now around the March on the Capitol of 1964. So that'll be our first story map. If you visit the Bardstown site, you'll see that there's story mapping with pictures and lots of didactic information. We plan to have this built out in the winter and launched for the new spring tourism season. Strategy two, promote one clear positive message. The idea was to write an internal communications plan. That plan is completed. Public relations request forms are available on the city's website for internal staffs. Blair is the person right now that's overseeing those requests. Strategy two, promote one clear positive message. Identify target audiences and create strategies for each. This is an ongoing effort. We do plan to have those target audiences really finally identified by the end of this calendar year. And in the internal communications team meeting, the target audience may change, you know, based on what the message is. So each team member that's part of the communications strategy is working on, you know, thinking through who is the intended target of this communication and how can we be most effective in reaching them? It's also built into department head communications meetings and internalized and we believe that See Click Fix is also going to help tremendously with that. The See Click Fix application is launched, as you all know. And so people can download that on their Apple or Android device from the App Store. Next is publicity and outreach. Create a social media calendar of coordinated postings and stories. So this is systematized as part of the discussions each month and there'll be further updates on this item as the new website launches. Next, we move into economic development and improving the business and enabling environment. Now, this effort is ongoing with input from each department. Portions of the work plans will constitute how to effectively communicate daily work and day-to-day tasks completed by staff. These measurables from each department are underway and while I've listed here that we target the completion of that is December, it's likely actually May. Next is creating a unified vision for economic and community development. We've had meetings with Covington, Newport, Bardstown, Chattanooga, and others to review best practices and we continue to explore best practices from other communities and thinking about economic development as a team sport. Resume joint utility meetings. The meeting is still being scheduled. It's expected, the first meeting is expected to take place in November to discuss the 2023 projects. The Frankfurt Sewer Department, the city departments, and the Frankfurt Plant Board now share all their GIS data to allow for better coordination. The meetings with all utilities is set for later this year and we're working on coordination with Columbia Gas to share the GIS information. This should make a big, this should make a big difference. You know, this was something that happened in the past. It was stopped during COVID. We want to make sure that we have an ongoing system to make sure that those groups are competing. As you heard in, yes.
Can you give us an example? Was that so that like the plant board and Columbia Gas don't arrive at the same spot at the same time to work on something? Or what would be an example of how that's. Or what would be an example of how that's coordinated?
The main thing to think about is, you know, when you look at a site for economic development, the first question that anybody who wants to locate here wants to know is, is there power, water, gas? And those things have to be, you know, have to be coordinated. Where, where are gas lines going to be extended? Where are water lines going to be extended? So it's really more about planning for the future. Kenny, I don't know if you want to add anything to that? No. The question was really about why are those meetings so important? Why is it important to coordinate?
Like, what's an example?
The biggest thing for us is, you know, if we have a large project that's coming in that we know we're running in this corridor, and then there's also water that's going to be on the opposite side of the street at the same time. One, you can't work in the same spot at the same time. And two, you know, as public works, one, they don't want to go through and pave a street, and then we come in six months later and tear it all up. So those coordination meetings help just, you know, we say, okay, this is where we're planning to work. Anybody having conflicts, anybody having problems, and it's just an open meeting that allows us to communicate with each other about where our projects are going to be. And it should make it easier and smoother for everybody in the end.
Okay.
An example is the Tiger Grant. I mean, our Second Street, I mean, there were utilities underneath, and everyone had to talk. And so everyone got to update their, where the utilities were, the sewer, water lines, things of that nature underneath the Second Street while they were going through doing the Second Street project. Now we know that no time soon unless there's a break, or Jesus not. But if anything worse to happen, it's all been updated for a while, that they should not be worrying about taking up that street again.
East Main was another project that was the same way. All utilities went through and replaced all the utilities down East Main before they did the change from four lanes to three lanes with the multi-use lane.
Thank you.
Strategy three in economic development, making available property construction ready. The Frankfurt Sewer Department continues to work with other city departments and KCDC to identify potential industrial parcels in the community and areas for a future industrial park. They're looking at several locations, and that work is ongoing to make sure that sewer is available and that the Frankfurt Sewer Department can have in its forward-thinking plans those advanced needs. As we heard this morning at the Bluegrass Ad Economic Development Summit, you know, it's all about regional parks. It's all about working together with, within our own community, as well as other neighboring communities to make sure that we have the, those capacity numbers, you know, that are going to be needed in the future. Strategy four is around citywide beautification and aesthetic improvements. The welcome banner for the train trestle has been ordered. We are waiting with bated breath for that to get installed. It's been a long time coming. During this quarter, as you know, Parcels B and C Zone Change was completed, and the Transit Center Parking Garage contract will be voted on yet this evening, so that, that continues. Also in this area, coordinating efforts with Frankfurt Tourism. There is a beautification committee that was reestablished and has met twice. That's chaired by Rebecca Hall. That group is going to meet monthly. The members include staff, representatives from the city, various city departments, citizens, tourism, and other local agencies. Another great example of collaboration. Strategy six focuses on livability and quality of life, and this action is about continuing street infrastructure and improvement projects. The sidewalk UPC and resurfacing contracts were approved by the Board of Commissioners, and utility repair and paving is underway. Now, you can see the targeted completion dates there for utility repair by December at the end of the year, but I do understand this is an item that is going to need additional budget. I don't have any more information about that yet, but more information will be coming. Strategy six focuses again on livability and quality of life, reviewing all facilities in city parks, sidewalks, and new trails. This is an inventory that's underway. The park administration and supervisors meet regularly, and it's ongoing. So just making sure that our sidewalks, trails, and parks are in good working order, that they're accessible, that we don't have anything that impedes the parks from really doing what they're here to do, which is to provide a break and recreation for all, but also to be one of the most powerful ways that, that we, that we promote that Frankfurt is a great place to live because we have lots of parks and lots of places for people to get outdoors. There's been a new sidewalk added from the bus stop on King's Daughter to the shopping center and existing sidewalks. This was identified as a priority to integrate walkability, and that work is ongoing. Moving into idea values, equity, diversity, and inclusion, and belonging. Human Resources has held their second meeting with the Kentucky League of Cities, and progress is continuing. It is anticipated to have the personnel policies updated to ensure that they are in line with these values by the end of the year. Alexis attended a job fair in Lexington to promote minority hiring. We conducted the International Jazz Day concert, attended local churches to inform the community of the city's desire to diversify our workforce. We attended the Frankfurt High Career Fair, assisted minority candidates with job application completion and referrals to Bluegrass Area Development District for possible placement with the City of Frankfurt, completed an agreement with the Career Center and the Bluegrass Ad to offer fully-paid transition work placements at the City of Frankfurt. So this is ongoing, but there is an emphasis on this work, and there's going to continue to be an emphasis on this work. Next is to improve ADA accessibility in public spaces. The ADA ramp repairs and sidewalk replacement on Woodland, Dogwood, and Arnett are currently going on by the end of September and ongoing. So again, improving ADA in public spaces is something that this staff team is very committed to. Strategy three again is about diversifying city recruitment efforts. The action was to conduct human resources-specific implicit bias training for hiring managers. The first training was held on October fifth, and the second will be held on October eighteenth. There were a total of sixty participants in the training, and this is one of those examples where this is to be systematized so that it's updated each and every year and is, is a part of what we do. It's got to be a regular part of what we do. We completed an agreement with the Kentucky Career Center and Bluegrass Ad to implement four hundred and eighty hours of paid job training and transition job seekers to positions with the city. This is coordinating with workforce development partners. And another activity around recruiting is to visit local churches, which has already, already resulted in one additional new hire on the city staff. And this is just something, again, that we have to systematize, and we have to make a regular part of our recruitment and retention efforts on the job side. Strategy four is around developing and marketing the city's core values. Those core values are posted there beside you. We have discussed the possibility of how to put these core values out to the public and make sure we're living into them in practice. One idea is to have the core values read before each meeting so that people are aware of what they are and they become a part of the lore of this organization. We have the core values posted on our website now, and we're working as we look at the new website to make sure it's accessible and prominent, as well as using maybe social media to help put those, to put those core values out there. Much in the same way that we're doing our civic pride campaign with I Too and Kentucky Distilled is just, you know, putting out there. This is not only a beautiful and welcoming place to live, but it's a place where people are concerned about belonging, and we care about each other. And I think everybody feels that, certainly growing up. I certainly felt that. But, you know, it's one of those things that you can't not say often enough when we live in these uncertain times and when civil discourse can become ugly. It's important at the local level to, to put those values into practice. Strategy four is also again, marketing the core values. The African-American Historic Context Report, as I reported, was completed in August. It's now available on the city's planning and community development website. There are hard copies at the city hall, museum, and the library. We're going to have hard copies available to be lent to the community through, through those places. It is, it is a, a large document, and we want to make sure that people can read it in a printed form as well as on the website. And we're working with the UK Historic Preservation Office to place sites identified in the African-American Context Report on the National Register of Historic Places. As many of you know, the National Register application is lengthy and detailed. It requires a lot of attachments and information. And so that is, that's a direct outgrowth of that report is that new partnership with Professor Dan Vivian, and two of his students have taken on two of the specific sites in order to start those National Register applications. So it's, it's pretty exciting because that was one of the main recommendations of the report. We're now on the fourth area of strategic focus, which is ensuring our sustainability. On the financial side, the action is around levying a fee for false alarms for the police department. The ordinance idea has been provided to Laura Ross for review. And I, I think it's scheduled for 2023, right, to be discussed at this point, or not yet?
I'm not sure, but.
Okay. Well, but I think it's an item that's, that's ongoing, and it's an item that's started. Discussion has happened, and I know it's one that, that people have been concerned about.
So about how many false requests do we get per year, a month, or any idea?
Chief Pomer. He wasn't listening. How many false alarms do we get?
Actually, if you, on the strategic plan I added, the amount of alarms and stuff we're meant to.
We'll pull it up for you. Why don't I keep going, and we'll come back to that, is that all right?
Yes.
Yeah, we do have this plan, as I reported last time, on the city server. That's the way we all communicate and keep it up to date. We have a lot of information included in there, notes, as well as a lot of statistics. Creating a public works asset master plan is also part of strategy two under sustainability. Reworking the capital improvements and asset management plan. We are in the process of developing an RFQ for that, and the, the goal is June of 2024. The next strategy is encouraging reusable grocery bags and other environmental resources. The team is exploring options, considering the cart service. You heard a bit about that today, and certainly considering cart service for certain commercial downtown businesses. I'm sorry, I just reported on the wrong one. But, so this one is around promoting and investing in energy-efficient building and maintenance techniques and personal consumption responsibility. Sorry, I misspoke about that one. Next is, they are reusable grocery bags that are going to be passed out by the end of the year. This is an ongoing item, but the idea through Frank Waste is to encourage through a public awareness campaign, the use of reusable bags and to provide some of those to get that started by the end of the year. Continuing to audit and monitor city government buildings for energy efficiency. Our work with NREL has been ongoing. Belinda and Public Works is tracking monthly usage and billing. We've had discussions with Honeywell regarding efficiencies, and this is an item that's going to continue to be discussed, and you'll see it as an ongoing item probably beyond December and into May of 2023. Review building codes for improvement in energy efficiency. The plan is to include development code rewrites, including green and sustainable themes in the comprehensive rewrite, which is currently underway. Again, the targeted completion date is June of 2023 for the comprehensive plan and June of 2024 for the development code updates. Ready? Go right ahead. Let's go back to levying a fee for false alarms for the police department.
For our CAD sheets, it doesn't really break down whether it was false or not. I can give you a good idea that for a quarter, we average answering over three hundred and seventy-five calls for alarm drops. Now, this is residential and business-owned. I can tell you, for at least my knowledge of a couple of businesses here in town, where pretty much at breakfast time when they first wake up or when they first open, you're going to an alarm there every morning. It, it became a regular thing. One of the businesses that went out of town or went out of business, I guess so Charlie's was another one. Every morning, every night, there was an alarm over and over. So we face, if I was gambling, out of the three seventy-five, I would say fifty to a hundred of those are false because you'll get the homeowner that doesn't set or unset their alarm over and over. And the policy that I have sent in to have reviewed does address different levels, different businesses, homeowners as well. Kind of an establishment of you get one or two free passes, and after that, it's a scale of charge after that point.
And those numbers were per month?
The three seventy-five is quarterly. That, that is actually the amount of alarms we answered from July, August, and September.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So you're saying kind of almost approaching a third of the calls. So you said fifty to a hundred, I think, during the time?
I would say so.
So if it was a hundred, that's kind of approaching a third.
Right. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that's quite a few.
Back to strategy six, which is adopting and encouraging 21st century staffing practices. This is under our sustainability area of focus. The team is working on two benefit and retention programs, paid parental leave, which you'll hear about in a minute, and sick leave buyback, and the targeted completion date for that is March of 2023. Pay for education with a promise of retention. There is a program in place for tuition reimbursement, and that, that has been in place for some time. So that's, that's an important benefit to retain as Kathy and the team have looked at what we can do to make sure that we are encouraging our staff to stay, that we make sure this is a great place to work. Thank you for, for this opportunity. It's a pleasure to report to you that now of, of our eighty-five action items, you know, more than fifty items are in action. So we're going to keep working on it. Questions?
George, want to say anything?
I just have more of a comment. One idea that I had brought up a couple of meetings ago was to have a five-cent bag fee to encourage people to use reusable bags and that that fee would just stay with the retailer and that they could use that for environmental programs or charity or to develop their own reusable bag that they could give or sell to people. How do you see it fitting into the strategic plan, or what do you think would be best?
Well, I think that's, that's something that the staff could develop and, and bring back for input, right?
As I put in an email and giving an estimate of hours, it would be a new program, and then we could look at overall what we're doing for the strategic plan, and if that's the will of the board, that's something we could pursue. But then we would also have to likely postpone some other activities since this is something new that we didn't include in our work plan and postpone others for later if it was the will of the board to pursue it sooner.
You mentioned the internal written communications plan. Is that a document? Is that something we've seen?
Yes. No, you have not seen.
It's a staff-level plan.
Then the C Click Fix Act, where, where? Then the See Click Fix App, or are we going to call that something else?
City of Frankfurt App.
I mean, the paper referred to it as the See Click Fix App. I just think it was a missed opportunity there to, I mean, we're using the company's brand.
Yeah.
We missed an opportunity there, I think.
Is it listed as the City of Frankfurt App? That's my understanding.
Right, and that's the reasoning behind it. We actually thought about it a bunch of different names, and the team came up with a bunch of different names, but felt like since this was going to be more than just being able to fix a pothole, you can access a lot of other stuff on the website, that we would just keep it as the City of Frankfurt website, and then you can go and report a problem.
So, the application is called the City of Frankfurt Application?
Right, and the See Click Fix is that software is a part of it.
Is the feature within that?
Yeah.
I misspoke? I apologize.
Let's brand it, you know, I think we had an opportunity there to brand it.
Let the record state that it is called the City of Frankfurt App.
City of Frankfurt, Kentucky. There we go.
We will note that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It works. I think I'm starting to see things after.
Yeah.
Yeah. It worked on when I submitted, and the sidewalk was fixed very soon after.
This team has worked very hard, and I just want to really acknowledge the staff, because this is, we've tried to make it as easy as possible, but I just want to acknowledge everyone's efforts to support this plan. It is your plan, it's a living, breathing document, and to make sure that we're all working together on it, I want to thank you for your commitment to that, the staff and the board. Thanks.
Keep it up.
We'll be back next quarter.
Next year.
Yes. See you next year. And we will welcome back Kathy Fields. All y'all received PowerPoint earlier today by email. You also have it printed out at your chair. Just want to thank Kathy and also some of our employees who got together a couple of times to meet to discuss options and ideas for a program that would help us attract and retain great employees.
Yeah, this was just discussed on the strategic plan, so we are getting closer and closer to having this fully formed in a way that we can roll out to employees. Last time that I met with you, I was instructed to meet with some subgroups cross-departmental with employees, particularly employees that would be newer in terms of what they would be seeking in terms of attractive benefits from an employer. So, I've done that, and I'll kind of report back to you on options that they have suggested. First, I just wanted to show you what some other cities in Kentucky are doing. This is data provided to us by Kentucky League of Cities. This is becoming an increasingly popular benefit, and more cities are moving in this direction, so we're seeing that happen. And even at the federal level, it hit some legislation that federally, there are some employees that already have this in place across the board. It still hasn't quite happened, but we see a lot more movement. One of the things I wanted to point out with this is that, in general, four to two weeks is kind of where a lot of employers are landing that have chosen to offer this. For sales is kind of leading with six weeks, that's the highest amount, and then that averages about 3.15 weeks. Recommendations from a couple of people that work in this area, Kentucky League of Cities and JER Group, have suggested that we start rather moderately and ease in, and then evaluate how the program goes. So, this is what was initially proposed, and what we discussed last time. So, this proposal would be 12 weeks of paid leave for adoption, foster care, two weeks of additional paid leave for kinship. One thing in talking to Commissioner Unger that has been added would be that there would be no waiting period for eligibility. If we look at the family medical leave rules, those would require one-year wait before employees become eligible for family medical leave. But as I met with employees in the committee, that was one of the things that seemed rather exclusionary and restrictive, so there was a desire to eliminate that one-year wait. Another thing that was discussed that seemed to be universally, well, the committees were small, this was universally accepted and viewed as a good approach among those committee members. That with KPP Tier Three employees, so those would be employees hired from January 1 of 2014 going forward, those employees outside of city regulation at the state level, they cannot save sick leave or have that sick leave be purchased back by Kentucky Public Pension Authority. So, nor are they paid out for their unused sick leave when they leave the city. If you're in KPPA Tier One or Tier Two, you can save that sick leave and have it purchased back by KPPA. So, if you're, this proposal is saying that if you're a Tier One or Tier Two employee, those would be employees that have been in the system since prior to 2014, that they could choose the benefit they valued most, either choosing the parental leave, paid parental leave program, or choosing to be able to have their sick leave bought back. So, this would be the richest benefit, and it's hard to estimate cost on this, because not all of our employees have insurance with the city, and then not all of them request FMLA. So, we kind of dug through records to try to find out who went on FMLA and who has newborns that are being covered by our insurance. So, we feel like we're really zeroing in that.
Kathy, can you go back to the previous slide? Because that's what you were talking about. Yeah, so then people can also see the option and then the cost.
Yeah, thank you. So, I feel very good about 15 to 18 being in the ballpark of what we're looking at for typical person a year. So, if we do this benefit, this would be $229,000 annually for the cost of that 12 weeks that that employee would be absent. How I came about the calculation is I looked at who are those employees that have been hired since 2014, what is an average hourly rate, and I took the average hourly rate plus fringe. So, there's no way to predict this number perfectly, because you don't know exactly who's going to have children.
Oh, and you got to go back, it keeps going forward. There you go.
Wow, thank you. I need to point your distractions, I'm a newbie at this, I'm sorry. So, this was the original, I talked about the original option, then I'm going to present some proposals that the committee came up with that are maybe easier in, an easier way into offering this, because they're actually lesser benefits. This one would, this one suggests that employees would use their own time for the first 80 hours or two weeks, but then after that, that they could be eligible for 10 weeks of paid leave from the employer. This is pretty similar to what we already talked about. Another addition to this is that the suggestion was that while employees offered those 12 weeks, they wouldn't receive any accruals. So, that would be about three months. Employees usually receive two days of accruals per month, so that would be about six days of accruals that they wouldn't receive. And as you can see, the cost, kind of splitting that in the middle would be, you know, maybe about, you know, 205, 210,000. This suggestion would be, again, very similar, but it was capping the leave at eight weeks rather than, so we had a 12 weeks, and we had a 10, now we've got an eight week. I don't really think that there's a lot of difference with this one, so just that it would be eight weeks, and then, once again, if I kind of look at the middle, it's probably, you know what, around 165,000 for that particular one. This one would actually look at how much leave employees had, and it would ensure that those employees received a full 12 weeks of paid leave, and that they had two weeks of leave still banked upon their return. So, if an employee had, for example, 10 weeks, we would only require that employee to use eight weeks of their own, so that they have the two weeks banked, and then we would supplement another four weeks of employer-paid. So, the amount of paid leave that the employee would get would be variable, depending on how much leave of their own that they have. Any questions about that? No?
I'm not following that.
Okay, so, as employees have been here longer, their banks tend to get greater. So, we've got lots of employees that actually have well over 12 weeks. So, if they already have over 12 weeks, then they would be able to use their own time and have the full 12 weeks off fully paid. So, if we want to ensure that they can be off for 12 weeks and be fully paid, then new employees in the first year, they're not going to have 12 weeks. They wouldn't have an opportunity to earn it yet. So, if this is an option that the board was interested in, then we would actually look at how much paid leave does that employee have, and how much additional leave would they need to supplement them up to 12 full weeks of paid leave plus two weeks remaining. But in order to have two weeks remaining, they would have to at least have two weeks. The maximum amount issued would be 12 weeks. So, if an employee had zero, they would get 12 weeks. If an employee had two weeks, they would get 12 weeks, because that would still leave them with the two weeks remaining.
And if they had 12 weeks, they get, did they get two weeks?
Yes, if they have 12 weeks, they would get two weeks. That's correct. And then you can see the cost at the bottom for that option. It does become a lower cost, because there is less time that the employer is providing toward that. And this is a similar concept. It's staggered, but it doesn't look so much of what is the accrual bank that the employee has, it looks more at how long has the employee worked here. So, in the beginning, with less than one year, that employee isn't going to have 12 weeks, so they would be eligible for the full 12 weeks. And then it keeps staggering down by two weeks, all the way through five years, stopping at four weeks. So, anybody with five or more years would be eligible for four weeks of paid parental leave, with employees with less time being eligible for higher amounts. And that one comes in at about, probably about 125,000. And then this final option is kind of a variation of the option I just presented, which ended at four weeks for all employees with more than five years of service. This would just be four weeks for all employees that are KPPA Tier Three employees, or that opt into the program and opt out of the sick leave program that they're in with KPPA. And so, this would be the lowest cost option of all of the options. Other costs that are not presented, because, to be honest, I'm not really sure how to measure them, would be overtime cost. Some managers have talked about concern with having to have mandatory staffing levels and cover absences with other staff at an overtime rate, but it's just super hard to be able to predict that, to know where the births are going to come, what department, and so forth. So, this is just something that I personally found quite heartwarming, and I wanted to share it, as I met with committee members. Some of the feedback was like, any of the options would be awesome, and I'd be happy with them. So, it was just really positive to hear that kind of information from them. Any questions that you all have?
No negative feedback.
Well, yes, not from the committee. Those at the committee did give feedback like this. Just this morning, we actually talked about this in staff meeting, and following staff meeting, there was a fair amount of negative feedback. This still, you want something to really be a slam dunk and overall positive, but there's pretty significant concern among our managers about how this will play out. There's big staffing concern, sick leave abuse concerns. So, I would say from the department head perspective, it ranges from kind of an absolutely not, I don't favor it, to it seems like a good idea, but it should be a gentler amount. I, so, yeah, that's kind of where that's at. One of the things that didn't gain it any real traction with the committee, but I personally have a degree of interest in, it could be cost-effective, and I think it could be equitable to those employees that may not be having children, would be if we offered employer-paid short-term disability. That would cost us about $55,000 a year for those employees that elect short-term disability. They wouldn't have those deductions coming off their checks, so there'd be a little more in their pocket for that. It would follow along with family medical leave in that if employees have a serious health condition, they could use that short-term disability that their employer's provided to take care of any employee that has, that's recovering from a medical condition. So, those things are kind of appealing to me, and it is like $55,000 a year, so it's a good cost option. What it doesn't meet, in terms of what I think we're trying to meet, is for male employees that become fathers, they will not qualify for payments from the short-term disability plan. And I've even explored if we could get a customized plan that would include a payable amount for that, but I wasn't successful, so that's kind of where that lands at. And then I've got just a few stats I would share with you, is that in terms of Tier Three, those are our primary employees, we've got 140 Tier Three employees, we've got 96 Tier One employees, and we've got 48 Tier Two employees. So, the majority of our employees are now Tier Three. And then also for our gender demographics of our full-time employees, 80% of them are men, and 20% of them are women. So, it's pretty surprising when you actually look at it. But, yeah, we've got a strongly male full-time workforce, 235 men and 59 women.
Commissioner Unger.
I want to thank you for hosting those meetings, for everyone that was involved. One thing I'd just like to start out with also is, during this discussion, it feels like an abuse of sick leave keeps coming up, and I'd like to see us trying to do something about that, if it's an actual problem. I know it's not totally related in my eyes, because I'm here just to talk about this parental leave, but if there's some sort of managerial class we can put people through that are approving sick leave, I feel like I'd just like to put that out there, that I think it's something we should look at and work on.
Yeah, I'll respond.
We don't have to go on about it, but...
I mean, this is subjective, so others may disagree with me, but I think that's kind of a fair comment, that historically, sick leave is used pretty, but it depends on the departments. Departments have different approach to it. So, I wouldn't say it's across the board with all departments, but in general, like if you've got the time, employees can use it pretty easily. But I'll also say, it's tough if an employee calls in and says, "I'm not feeling well, you know, I've got a terrible headache," or "I'm feeling kind of, you know, just stuffed up, runny nose, whatever." I mean, it's hard to just say, "You're abusing your time, you're lying," or to do a major investigation. Sometimes we find employees, we see them out in the community, and we know they're not sick. So, if we identify that, we will address it, because they haven't been, they haven't been honest with us in what they're reporting. But in general, if employees call and say that they're sick, then it's taken on the honor system that they're sick. And so, well, I think that you're right in many ways about, is it maybe a little bit too lax? Probably so, but also, it's not like vacation, where vacation, you could just say, "I can't afford to have you off, I've already got some people out, I can't schedule that." I deny it. But with sick leave, when people call and say they're sick, it's tougher to say, "No, you're not." Do you know what I mean?
Sure.
Yeah.
I was wondering on Option Five, if that would also include the no-waiting period for eligibility? I'm guessing it's all sort of fluid, so we can talk about what we want, but...
Yes, it's all sort of fluid. Yes.
Thank you. Kind of piggybacking on your, for conversation, I'm not an insurance, you know, I'm not an expert on this stuff. When we talk about abuse of power, and the scenario where an employee calls in faking a headache's one thing, but, I mean, a baby, right? Like, we're not, like, so like, these things are like in place to where you can't come in and like, just abuse it.
Yeah, no, I don't think anyone thinks that that's occurring.
Right, so, and we're talking about things that are so very different. I guess, like, I'm saying, the protocol here will be the pre-qualifying event, to where is that even really an option for us? I'm saying, like, is that a fear that can come to fruition?
I think it's more that...
How does someone abuse that?
Some employees may see these balances that they have, and they're kind of a temptation to be gone, because they're hanging out there. So, if they have 12 weeks paid, then their balance is still hanging out there. So, I don't think anybody's really going to falsify the birth of a child, I hope not fit. But, they may then, now, they haven't used any of their time, and they've got a healthy balance hanging, so then that could possibly be like, eh, got a headache, my stomach feels bad, that kind of thing.
Okay.
I would like to also address, you know, I hear the staffing issues, I know that that's a problem, but it will always be a problem if someone decides that they want to start a family and they need to take time off with a newborn. So, that's something we'd have to deal with anyway, and so, we would prefer to keep somebody who's already here and support them through that time with this benefit. And I... And I, and I appreciate you also including the other cities that provide, you know, parental leave. I would like to see Frankfurt sitting a little bit better. I know as mentioned last meeting, when it was discussed that I would support eight weeks so that we're ahead of for sales as the capital city. So I, just to let everyone know how I'm feeling about this, I would support starting with 12 weeks unless people want to go and support a higher amount. But I would also be willing to talk about a policy that would potentially start at eight and then address expanding that in the future if it's going well. I like the idea of no waiting period for eligibility because, you know, if you're a full-time employee, you might get hired, you might be a father that needs to take time to help your family. I do think this option for the KPPA Tier One and Tier Two to choose the benefit is, is a good option because in most cases, you know, these are some of our employees that are beyond that, the time to use the benefit. They're also probably going to stay in the sick leave service credit program because that's a really good benefit that our city gives our employees. So I don't really see many of the Tier One or Tier Two opting into the benefit. So I like having that in there.
And that could actually impact some of these cost projections because I'm trying to look at how many infants we've got in the city. And so I really wasn't calling through that in a way of tiers. So, you know, there could have been, that could maybe make that number go down. So one of the things while I'm thinking of it, I do want to share with you as something to consider as this takes shape is employees with second jobs, which is pretty common with our workforce. So if someone is off for 12 weeks, fully paid, or eight weeks, whatever that turns out to be, may they continue to work in their second job or even additional work during that time? I think is something that the policy probably would want to, my opinion, address. Another thing was if someone uses their 12-week allocation through, for a different reason than a birth. So their family medical leave has already been dipped into, maybe, maybe they've used a part of it. Maybe they've used the whole 12 weeks. Then do they qualify again for another 12 weeks with the paid parental leave? Those are some details of how this is drafted that I think we probably ultimately want to have our hands around.
Well, it initially ran concurrently with FMLA.
So, so if it runs concurrently with FMLA, then are we saying that if someone already uses all their FMLA and they have a child, they would not qualify for 12 weeks of paid leave?
Right.
Okay.
This list of cities, is it just representative of other cities in Kentucky? Or is this the complete list of all cities that do this?
I don't think it's the complete list. I received it from Kentucky League of Cities and they're knowledgeable about the cities that they work closely with on policy, but some work with other agencies or do their own thing. So I don't think that they have an exhaustive list. In fact, I think that Louisville does, and Louisville's not on the list.
Does this include, I think I saw it there, but it didn't say like, leave applies only to birth of a child, adoption, foster care, and surrogacy. What if, is this also included serious health would be having a stillborn child?
That would probably be, at that point, there might be medical recovery. So it would be that person's health issue and also probably maybe some mental.
So it would fall underneath the serious health?
It would fall under, I feel like that would fall under the serious health condition. And as this has moved forward, at one time, it was including everything, very much like family medical leave, the employee's serious health condition, health condition of the family member, birth of a child. And really, I've got to say, it became very clear to me in meeting with committee members that they're like, wow, that's, that's a lot, that's too broad, that's going to be a lot of people basically using the policy. And the committee themselves recommended like paring it down.
I just think that it needs to be listed specifically because I would hate for anyone to get in that and it not be a serious, I would like it to be listed because you don't want that to happen, but it does occur and they, they deserve the same exact time.
And, and so that's a situation where like the short-term disability option, in what you described, that person would qualify for the short-term disability. So that's what, I really do like that option in a lot of ways, except that it doesn't really serve our, our male fathers. That's the problem with that.
Do we have a bereavement policy that that would fall under?
We do not have a bereavement policy. Our ordinance, well, our ordinance addresses bereavement, but it says that sick leave is used for bereavement.
How are people feeling?
Is this something we want to take up at the voting session? Are we ready?
I think that gives us time to think about it and we talk to people who have experience in this area and vote in on the 24th.
And staff would be happy to schedule individual meetings to dive in deeper to your questions and get more of a sense of the will of the board and what they would like to do. And then could bring it back, yes, like in November.
Thank you, Kathy.
I think everybody else is saying November.
One thing, Kathy is just standing here, she, she brought up a point to us and that is we don't normally vote on employee benefits. You all don't normally vote on that. And so we didn't ask you to do that tonight, but given the employee benefit presentation you all heard, are you okay with us moving forward per the recommendations for that? Were there any concerns or objections to the employee benefits?
The previous discussion?
The previous discussion.
On the savings with Humana and Delta?
Interest in raising five or 10% the, the, the monthly cost for employees, resulting in $24,000?
Yeah. Now, the, just to clarify, the savings is really a cost avoidance. So Humana's coming in with anticipated cost to be more cost neutral. Anthem is coming in with, what was it, like, four, yeah, so I just want to be clear.
We're not seeing, it's not going to be $450,000 less than our budget next year.
Right, it's a cost avoidance.
Right, it's going to be kind of neutral.
Right, although there are other ways that we do anticipate savings, like the ending the coverage on employment term date, the insurance changes, even what we're doing with the HRA program. You know, there's, you know, $35,000 there. So there are some other ways that there's some true savings coming.
Did you all make the decision on whether it's a five or 10% increase?
I'm, I'm sorry.
We leave it to Kathy to make the decision whether or not.
Well, there wasn't a recommendation on there, was there?
Yeah. That was the one item that didn't have a recommendation. And we have had the same employee premiums for six years. So I will say that my philosophy generally is when we're performing well financially, budgetarily, it, I don't really see reason to put any cost on employees because we're doing well. This last year, we actually didn't do so great. So if there is a year where there's cost change, this might be the time to do it. We've also had the same premiums for several years straight. But I think that, I like that Wayne presented fairly mild changes because we are, this is something that employees notice and we have been aware for retention. While employees are, are seeking the city, they may not be as dialed into the low cost of our benefits, but once they're here, they understand that and they compare it to other places they've worked. And it actually, I do believe is a pretty successful retention tool. So I think that that's important. And I think that it's important that we don't end up eroding the pay increases that we gave our employees this summer. So that's my feeling.
But I think the, the five or 10%, if we're talking about $80 a month or somebody's paying $100 a month and that's, that's five or $10. That, it's not the same as some of the other, that are pay, obviously are pay increases. But being mindful, I think when I saw some of the, the comparisons of our benefits, we're still, I mean, we're very, we're much more competitive. Others are paying hundreds and hundreds of dollars more per month than we're paying.
We're very competitive. And that showed through the, the comp study too, that was addressed then as well. That that's, that is one of our second points. And does the board have any input on where premiums are set for employees or?
We can follow up with a recommended email and just lay it out succinctly about an increase. I'll do that, follow up.
Thank you, Kathy, thank you.
I just, I guess I would just like to take in consideration whatever that raise is that, that we're cognitive that we just gave our employees a raise that everyone has been happy with and then we take that raise back, charge them a higher increase. So I just said that we take that in consideration.
Right, of course, of course.
Now we'll move on to action items.
Last item, Chuck Knowles. Staff is requesting approval from the Board of Commissioners to award the design-build contract to Messer Construction Company an amount of $10,500,000. Messer was the low technically acceptable bid for the project. I mean, doesn't need to be overstated that this is extremely important milestone and achievement for the city for fulfilling its responsibility and leading efforts to ensure the redevelopment of Parcels B and C. I know, I'm really excited. I know everybody is really excited to have this started. And just to let you all know, we have meetings starting this week. This is, we're not going to be sitting on this. First design meeting is next week and we'll be coming back to you all and bring a revised design. And I would recommend having a special session on it so that you all have an opportunity to really see the design and talk about it and get input on it.
Motion, Terrence.
Second.
Any discussion on this motion?
I just would like to clear, she said that it was the city's responsibility that we were being a... I just want to say that we're being a good team sport and helping take care of this responsibility that was fathered down for us to get something in our community. So I want to make that very clear, that as a team from the City Commission, the mayor, and all of our staff, that we stepped up to continue something in Parcels B to continue moving forward. And we were good teammates in getting the state responsibility completed as far as this parking spaces. And thank you to others that, you know, consisted of the transit center of adding that on. So make that very clear.
Any other discussion or questions for, we got Chuck here. Eric's here. All right, say none, Eric None, I'll ask to collect the call for vote.
Commissioner Rosen?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Waldridge?
Yes.
Mayor Wuppersen?
Yes, and that motion carries. We'll move on, discussion of tentative agenda for the voting session.
I have one item. This past week, I attended the 12th Eastern Native Grassland Symposium. And one of the speakers was Tracy Potter, who's the state Aprilist. She works for the Department of Agriculture and she gave one of the programs. And how this ties into the City Commission is first, we're doing pollinator habitat in the parks in select areas. So it would be just background information about how having native wildflowers available for bees and other pollinators such as bumblebees and native bees. And she would give a presentation on that. She's said she's available November 14th, our work session. We'll be able to do that. And one other interesting takeout from this seminar or symposium was that one of the biggest growth areas for use of native seeds is underneath solar installations. So that you get a dual use out of a solar array. And just an exciting thought of what we could be doing.
Will invite her November work session?
Yep, I believe that's November 14th.
What about the voting meeting October?
Yes.
Any sewer tap, do you think we'll be ready to talk about that? Tenerant merchant ordinance, solid waste plan resolution, do we have to adopt that?
Yeah, stop the reservation, yes.
Paid leave?
We're kind of off the lines.
Yep, yes.
Paid leave?
Well, we'll have to, we'll see. Commissioner, when's it, October? Let's see where we stand on that.
I'll follow up with the will of the board to put it either on the October voting session or November voting session.
Thank you.
Can we get a feasibility study update for the KSU where we're at with that? Because it seems that Mr. Cable is no longer with Kentucky State University. So I'd like to know, I think there's two people right now that are helping in that situation, but I do not want this feasibility study to fall through the cracks because we, someone has stepped down at Kentucky State. So I'd like to get an update on where we're at with that feasibility study and the next step so we can continue moving forward.
That's a good start. Move on to new business.
I, I don't have anything really to discuss, but a couple of things for staff maybe to follow up on is, I'd got a, spoke with a resident and they, they had looked at the rock going, I think it's down Old Lawrenceburg Road as you're going around the curve going toward, what's the restaurant? Cliffside. And they said that it seems that the rock is shifting right there. And there's also a tree that's leaning and they're afraid that there's going to continue to be shifting over the past few years, that there's going to continue shifting and that that tree could slide and fall over on someone. So if we could get someone to look into that, that curve right there, it'd be great just for, we don't want anyone to get hurt. And then also, I'm not sure, and this may be a solicitor question, but if we could look into if it's the feasibility of expanding our mixed district. I, we'd had a couple, myself and Commissioner Unger had a couple of conversations with owners down at the boat dock, at the restaurant there, and just seeing what is the feasibility and how far could we stretch it if we wanted to expand our mixed district to help other stores? So if that's something we could look into. Thank you.
Catricia, on your first request about the road shifting, isn't that a state road near Cliffside?
Yeah, the road, no, not the road, the rock on the, the property there. So I don't know who would own that piece of property. I don't know if it's the owner there or if it goes up to the state. I'm not sure how it is, but it's the rock, not the road. It's the embankment there. So I don't know who would own all of that and where the shifting starts.
I know it's something we've all been talking about a lot lately and it came up in the forum, but talking about Airbnbs and short-term rentals in town. I know I've talked to staff about it a bit. While they're very beneficial for tourism and for people that own them, I'd like us to see if we could take a look at that, see what other communities are doing, what kind of policies they have and how they're handling it.
So you mean from the standpoint of competing with hotels or?
The fact that it's sort of eating into our housing stock.
Don't we have to have a new ordinance by the, at the beginning of next year?
We do, we do. There's, Rob and Antonucci and I are actually meeting this week to discuss some changes that we need to make to the transient room tax ordinance. So now is a great time to be talking about other regulatory issues or whatever else might come up with Airbnb.
I have some other items that, that I got at the KLC conference as well that, and some helpful information that I've been looking at too as well.
Anything else?
Ooh, I got one, I got one. Now, speaking with some members in our community and developers and I think we need to look at talking about expanding our human resource capital in the Building Inspector Department. Get caught up for the demand that's coming through to staff and, you know, a lot of people want to do a lot of things. And so we need to make sure, I think, you know, we have that personnel in place to keep up with demand. So just a conversation to start.
Let's get over unfinished business now.
I guess I thought of another thing. Our vote tour to look at potential new park side, did that...
Our boat tour to look at potential new park side, did that, I think the, the second, we had to cancel the boat tour to look at, because of weather or the river, and then the second one didn't fill, or is it still something we want to try to do?
We did do it.
We did.
Oh, you did? Some of us did.
Good.
Maybe we need to do another?
No, I think it's covered then. I didn't realize that.
No other unfinished, new business?
Motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
Second.
And second, all those in favor, say aye. We need to adjourn.